Good evening, I'll call to order the December 16th, 2019, meeting of the Arvada City Council. Nope, actually, I'm not. I'm going to call to order the Housing Authority meeting for the, for the Housing Authority. And Kristen Rush, if you'll call the roll.
Chairman Williams?
Here.
Vice Chair Marriott?
Here.
I'm sorry, that would be some some. Commissioner Pfeifer?
Here.
Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
I'm missing someone on my list.
Did you get Ms. Simpson?
I think so.
All present, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17th, 2018, and August 5th, 2019. Any changes, corrections? Well, we don't actually, we're not going to vote on just if there's any changes or corrections, so. There are none that I see, so those stand approved as presented. Is there anyone that wishes to address us as the Housing Authority at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and we will hear from Ed Talbot, our secretary, who has announced his coming retirement.
I changed my mind. Kidding, just kidding. Just wanted to let you know. Oh yeah, that time has come, obviously, more information on that as we go. So I know we have a very loaded agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to keep this pretty brief for you. I have two reports I'd like to make to you tonight, and then we have two action items. And then in terms of the reports, I could proceed on those if you're ready.
You may proceed.
Okay. First is, just very briefly, through the Section 8 Housing Assistance Payments Program, we received federal funding, basically from the government, to run that particular program. As a result of the rapid increase in rents for that assistance program, and generally the inadequate funding levels that we were provided for the program for housing assistance payments, we ran into a situation we identified in May, and we worked with our HUD representatives to address a funding shortfall. The shortfall amounted to over $400,000. This was a challenge for us, but our objective in this was to be sure that we could address the shortfall and deal with it without having to terminate anybody off the program. And I'd like to, where's my folks, give you the team that did the hard work on this. Carrie Espinosa, she's the Section 8 Program Supervisor, Deana Cody, the Housing Specialist, Johnny Yang, Housing Specialist, and Natasha Galston from Finance, who takes care of our accounting. These are the folks, this is the team, that basically allowed us to go from a shortfall of $413,000 down to zero. We just found out on May, on December 12th, we've been taken off shortfall status, and we're coming into the new year with a projected surplus of around two grand. So I'm really proud of these folks for the work they did. And I won't walk you through everything they did, but it was an enormous and amazing amount of work and commitment that they put forth to take us to be, get us out of that shortfall situation.
Thank you all.
Really appreciative of the work they did. And what I'll do is I'm going to forge onward unless there's any-
Well, Mr. Marriott, I just wanted to ask you a question, Mr. Talbot. So what did you do? My, my understanding is you get a fixed amount of money, and because rents have gone up, it doesn't go as far, so.
Correct. So what happens is that they determine, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development determines by formula, the amount of housing assistance payment assistance we'll get to serve a maximum of 508 clients. That's a set number. What happened is that basically, when we projected our cost to serve the clientele we had, given the projected rents, and the amount of funding that was going to be coming from the government, called a HAP, it's our HAP, Housing Assistance Payments, we saw that there was a difference. That was back in May, that we were going to be short by that amount of money. We were not going to receive enough to be able to pay for the cost for the clients we had enrolled in the program. So what we had to do, the main thing was, which was on a disappointing side, we closed the program to any new applicants. We didn't lease up anybody new. That brought us down to a program size of about 469 clients, when we could have been at 508. The other thing we did, did the good work of these folks, we went out and pursued other funding. We actually got two other funding sources that we identified, worked with HUD to get those in. That was, give or take, around $200,000 we could bring in. The rest of it was a number of actions. Jawboning with the landlords enrolled in the program, meeting with the clients to be sure that our clients were indeed paying what their fair share should be through the program, trying to find places where we could basically try to either minimize, stabilize, or bring down the amount of funds that were necessary to pay for the housing costs for the clients in the program. Our number one objective was we didn't want to kick anybody off the program, because these are very low-income folks, families and seniors, and a lot of these folks, if they were taken off the program abruptly because we didn't have the money, they could potentially be on the street. We didn't want that to happen. That was our number one goal.
So some people left the program, or some were out of the program, and they essentially, via attrition. Can you give us an idea of how many that was, or just an idea roughly? It doesn't have to be exact.
I think we started out the year, I think we started out the year, close to about 500 families, and now we're down to 469.
Okay, so about 30. Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions?
No.
Okay. Moving on, a piece of good news is that on top of basically the work that was done to try to live within our means, we've increased our means. And you know that issue that indeed homelessness is, is increasing in our community, and how are we going to deal with that? We did see an opportunity for what is called mainstream vouchers. Again, with the hard work of Carrie and with the team here, an application was placed in for those mainstream vouchers, and I'm going to have Carrie report on the success we've had with that application. Carrie?
Good evening. As Ed said, that in July of 2019, HUD announced the opportunity for housing authorities across the nation to apply for mainstream housing vouchers. And these vouchers, they're still part of the Housing Choice Voucher Program, but they're a little unique in that they are specified for people who are non-elderly, meaning they're between the ages of 18 and 62, and who have a person in the household who is a, who has a disability. We submitted an application, we requested 50 vouchers to target, again, the non-elderly persons with disability, and we were focusing on those who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. On November 14th, the Housing Authority was notified that our application for mainstream vouchers was approved. We were awarded 30 vouchers, so not the 50 that we originally applied for, but we were awarded 30 vouchers with a budget authority of just under $300,000 to pay for those vouchers, starting in February of 2020. So right now, we're out there, we're trying to find folks who to, to refer. So we're currently focused on taking families off of our current Housing Choice Voucher waiting list, so they will be given first preference at these vouchers. And then if we still have room, we will issue a public notice and recruit more families for the program. So that's currently what we're working on. But we're extremely excited to have this opportunity, especially given the vulnerability of this population and the need in the community. So very excited.
So that will allow us to grow our program of 508 to 538, again, with the limitations on budget, but that will allow us additional resources, obviously, to try to address a pressing and important problem in the city.
Very good.
And if you haven't, don't have any questions?
No questions on that.
Okay. You guys can all sit down if you want to. So you have two action items. The first will be for 2020, is an action item approving the budget for the Housing Authority. This is principally the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. In your documents there, you'll see basically a brief summary about that, what the expenditures are looking like. We're looking for basically a budget of about $5 million to run this program. We don't know exactly what that's going to be, because the Congress is still involved in their final work on the appropriations. But when that's done, obviously, we'll have a better idea what our final budget numbers are. But that right now is the budget I'd like to bring to you for 2020, for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Again, I won't walk you through all the detail in this, but be happy to take any questions.
I'll open it up for questions or action from the Commissioners. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would make a motion. And so the motion I make, I'll move that R-HA-1902, a resolution adopting that a 2020 budget for the administration of a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Last item is a procedural one. We have to basically enter into a depository agreement for the use of the Section 8 funds. Last agreement was done with JP Morgan in September 2016. It's time to do another one. So this is just basically continuing our obligation to establish that depository agreement with the bank. And unless there's any other questions, there's not much more of it going to you.
Great. Mr. Marriott?
So I'll move that R-HA-1903, a resolution approving a general depository agreement between the Arvada Housing Authority and JP Morgan Chase Bank, NA, be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero as well. We are not scheduled to begin our City Council meeting until 6:15, so this gives council members an opportunity to say nice, some nice things about you, Mr. Talbot, if you're-
Well, I hope so. No. You'll notice 11 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
You did, you did an excellent job. With, Mr. Talbot and I have spent many years together, and I used to give him a lot of grief for how long his presentations are, and he does an excellent job, and his, the grief I gave him was not warranted, let's put it that way. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, Mr. Talbot, I, I want to say thank you for all your years of service. As a kid who grew up here in Arvada, you have been employed at the city of Arvada almost as long as I've lived in the city of Arvada. So thank you for all that, all that you've done for all of us around now, all those that were before, and most importantly, all the, the work you've done that puts in place actions for all those who are still yet to come. You've had an incredibly distinguished career here at the city, and, and really exemplified public service, what I really think is one of the highest callings out, out there. And I hope you enjoy your retirement as much as we've enjoyed having you here at the city, and thank you again for your service. It's been, been most excellent.
Commissioner Mayor, thank you for those remarks. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Miller?
Mr. Talbot, you are fantastic, and I appreciate everything that you've done. I am very excited that you have helped us to get another Habitat community here, and I hope that after your retirement, when that is being built, that you will come back and swing your hammer with me and help build that Habitat home.
I have to admit, I'm really looking forward to that. And we are having our pre-submital meeting with the Habitat folks tomorrow, so.
Great. I just had the good fortune of working on a Habitat project in Denver, and it's, it's so rewarding. And so looking forward to bringing another one to Arvada. Mr. Pfeifer?
No, Ed, you have been a champion and a steward for our citizens in our city, and I'll echo what my peers are saying, and I'm sure you'll hear more. But you're also our silent hero, because you champion so many things for our citizens, and never, you know, try to praise yourself or toot your horn, but you're that force that moves our city forward on very tough topics like housing, and taking care of our citizens. And to me, you are that hero for, for many of our citizens. You know, I worked for the Food Bank, and I was on the board for years, and the relationships you've built with our nonprofits are unwavering. And I hope the city continues after you leave, and thank you again for all your service to, not only to the city, but to the citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner Pfeifer.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, Mr. Talbot, I, I appreciate the work that you've done. And, and since I've been on council and have had the pleasure of getting to know a number of residents in Castle Gate who live with disability on a regular basis, I've come to really appreciate the, the work that you do, and, and how in need they are of, of these places to, to live and be able to function with those limitations. So thank you so much. And I wish you very, very happy retirement. And I would imagine you're going to do a lot of volunteering, maybe, still?
I'm going to be a volunteer with Earthwatch quite a bit, is my intention.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jones?
Just quickly, I'll echo what my fellow colleagues have said, but appreciate the fact that so many years ago, when you were one year into your employment here at the city, you took on the challenge of creating this authority and creating an opportunity for different kinds of housing for those that need those housing selections. So thanks for all of your hard work, and appreciate your dedication to the city for all these many years. And-
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Congratulations in your retirement.
And Ms. Simpson?
Mr. Talbot, as the new kid, you and I haven't had the chance to work together very much, but I can say, just on exit, taking us from a $400,000 shortfall to a balanced budget and a small surplus is a real testament to the quality of the work that you do, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner Simpson, and again, not to, to go on. But again, it's been one heck of a ride. I started here as an assistant planner, you probably saw on the note 45 years ago. I was doing fence, fence permits. And then Community Development Act came along, and it was ahead, spending time creating the authority, starting the Section 8 program, essential repairs, community development block rent, Arvada House. It was quite a time, I have to say. And it's been quite a time since. And I don't have any prepared remarks, because I'm still here for a little while. You're going to have to put up with me for a couple more months, and I'll probably have a little more to say. But the key part of this has always been leadership, and that starts with you guys, and it continues down through all the staff and the employees within the city that I so appreciate for the work and support they've given me. But particularly, I want to point out, it's the team in my division that have really made it a pleasure for me to work here. And we wouldn't be where we're at, it wouldn't be me at all. It's really them that really put in the work and get us to where we're going. I'm just so appreciative to be blessed with the people I've been able to work with here. So again, you'll have a couple more months with me, and we'll see how that goes. And I'll try to keep the meeting short if I'm before you again.
Great job. Thank you. Now we will convene, and I'll call to order the Arvada City Council for December 16th, 2019, and I'll call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll call roll as council?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
We next have our minutes of December 2nd, 2019. Are there any changes or corrections other than the one that has been previously brought to our attention by Ms. Ford? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved with that addition of a comma, that, so we know that Ms. Ford is looking at these things closely, which is very good. Next, we have public comment on items that are not on our agenda, and I do have some individuals signed up. I'll start with Victoria Francis, and then Kristin Klipka will follow.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and councilmembers. My name is Victoria Francis. I live at 5865 Brentwood Street here in Arvada. I am here this evening on behalf of the three Refugee Resettlement Agencies who work in the state of Colorado, African Community Center, Lutheran Family Services, and the International Rescue Committee in Denver. We are seeking consent from the city to continue to initially place refugees in Arvada. Yesterday evening, I sent information via email to all councilmembers about this request, and I am here today to provide in-person comment. Refugee resettlement agencies contact, excuse me, contract with the Bureau of Population, Refugees and Migration under the US State Department, and welcome and serve refugees who've been approved to come to the US and who have gone through extensive security vetting by the FBI, the Department of Homeland Security, and the Department of Defense. We also work in partnership with the Colorado Refugee Services Program under the Colorado Department of Health and Human Services. On September 26th, 2019, President Trump issued Executive Order 13888, which changed the way resettlement agencies engage in consultation with states, counties, and cities. The executive order mandates that resettlement agencies now obtain written consent from each jurisdiction where they intend to or could potentially place a newly arriving refugee family or individual. Before the executive order, there was no requirement for local consent. In the past two fiscal years, approximately 15 refugees have been initially placed in Arvada, 47% from Russia, 40% from Belarus, and 13% from Eritrea. 80% of these individuals were parents with children. While this number is small, the impact of not providing consent could be significant to these individuals and other residents in Arvada. If consent is not obtained by January 21st, 2020, resettlement agencies in Colorado would not be able to place a newly arriving refugee family or individual in Arvada, even if that individual already has a family member, including a spouse, child, or parent living in our community. However, because refugees arrive with legal status and freedom of mobility, they could decide to self-place in our jurisdiction where consent has not been obtained. If that happens, resettlement agencies would be prohibited from providing services to that individual or family for their first 90 days in the US, a vital time when critical supports and services occur, including ESL enrollment, job readiness, and job placement, cultural orientation, school enrollment, initial health screenings, and connections to medical and mental health resources. Communities that do not provide consent will not have access to the technical assistance and community support resettlement agencies often provide, including training for police, fire, and first responders about working with refugee populations, supporting school districts, health clinics, and other service providers as they work to provide trauma-informed and culturally and linguistically appropriate services. On behalf of the refugees our three resettlement agencies serve, and the Arvada residents, which I am one of, who are hoping to, or, well, not this part is true, but I'm an Arvada resident, the Arvada residents who are hoping to be reunited with their loved ones, I ask that you consider this urgent matter, and when given the opportunity at a future meeting, vote to pass a resolution that would provide consent for initial placement of refugees in our community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. And after the next person speaks on the same issue, I'll have a comment on it. So Kristin Klipka?
Hello, my name is Kristin Klipka. I live at 12707 West 85th Circle. I am a senior at Ralston Valley High School. I am here today to encourage you to pass a consent resolution by the, by the city of Arvada that would allow newly arriving refugees to continue to be placed within our community in compliance with Executive Order 13888. Here in Arvada, we pride ourselves on the quality communities we build and our acceptance of all kinds of people and families. The passing of a consent resolution would demonstrate support for our newest refugee neighbors, as well as our older neighbors who are hoping to reunite with family members who are approved for resettlement here in the US. The time to act on this is now. The Jefferson County Board of Commissioners has already passed a consent resolution. I have lived in Arvada my whole life, and I am proud to say I am from here. However, as I continue to grow and become a more active member and citizen of this community, I want to remain secure in the knowledge that my city welcomes refugees with open arms. People who are fleeing incredibly hard, almost in unimaginable circumstances, and are forced to leave their homes due to war, persecution, or natural disaster deserve the chance to rebuild their lives and redefine their concept of home without unnecessary hindrances. Refugees have faced more fear and pain in a couple of years than most of us do here in Arvada in our lifetime. So why should we give them another obstacle to overcome, one that could potentially keep them from reuniting with their families? I once again ask you to pass a consent resolution by January 2020 to support refugees and give them a chance to be as lucky as I am to call Arvada their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you both for speaking on this topic. We've had a discussion as a council, and we're going to put this on the consent agenda for January the 6th. So it will be on our agenda for then. And I, frankly, I wasn't aware of the deadline that we had to, so we'll be able to meet that, so. Okay? Next, Stephanie Wells.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephanie Wells. I live at 12458 West 70th Place in Arvada. I'm here tonight to talk about the single-use plastic bags that our grocery stores are currently giving out. I read in today's paper that the city of Denver is considering strongly changing their law to require grocery stores to charge for these plastic bags, thereby encouraging people to instead bring their reusable bags. I've been doing this for quite a few years, but I noticed that most people, at least that go to the King Supers at 64th and Ward, where I go, are not doing this. At one point, I was waiting outside the store for my son for about 10 minutes, and I noticed the people, patrons coming out of the store. About 90% of them were using the single-use plastic bags, sometimes as many as 20 or 30 of these in their cart, each with only a couple of items in it. In Denver, Councilwoman Kendra Black said, and this was a quote from the article on this, "There's a trillion single-use bags used worldwide every year, and their life is 15 minutes." And they, then they end up in the waste stream. They can be recycled. There's a recycle bin in the grocery store, but it's not used very much that I've noticed." So what she says is, "It's a much more sustainable practice to have a sustainable bag. The way they propose it in Denver is that the store would get four cents, they would charge 10 cents per bag, the store would get four cents, and the city would get six cents out of that." And trust me, in the cities where this has already started, such as Boulder, the use of single-use plastic bags goes down dramatically, and the waste of plastic bags goes down. I ask you to consider for the city of Arvada to do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And what we'll probably do is refer this to our Sustainability Committee to get some input from them. Okay, anybody else that wishes to address City Council during public comment that's not on the agenda items for later in the evening? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public comment and move on to some new business. We have three items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution amending the intergovernmental agreement between our, state of Colorado, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, and the city of Arvada pertaining to the Ralston Road reconstruction, Upton Street to UConn Street. And the second one is a resolution authorizing a construction contract between Arvada and T&amp;M Construction in an amount not to exceed approximately $2.6 million for the Ralston Road reconstruction from Upton Street to UConn Street. Third item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Yultig Engineers for Owners Representative Services for the West 72nd Avenue, Kipling Street to Sim Street Project in an amount not to exceed a little over $2 million. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Ford?
Yes, Mayor, I move that consent items number R19-126 to R19-128 be approved.
Motion's for approval of the consent agenda. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have three resolutions. The first is Resolution 19129, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Denver and the city of Arvada for the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this intergovernmental agreement with the city of Denver, Denver is a eligible fiscal agent for the authority of the, of the UASA Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program. This agreement would enable us to participate in the program through Denver as a fiscal agent. The purpose of the Urban Area Security Initiative Program is to assist high, a high-threat, high-density urban areas in efforts to build, sustain, and deliver the capabilities necessary to prevent, protect against, and mitigate, and respond to acts of terrorism. We recommend approval of the resolution in order to allow us to participate in this program and work regionally to mitigate terrorism threats.
Open up for City Council question or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
I'd like to make the motion if there's not any questions.
There are no questions. You may proceed.
Okay, I move that, I'm pulling it up, excuse me. I move that Resolution 19-129, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Denver and the city of Arvada for Urban Area Security Initiative Grant be approved.
Motion's for approval. That passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you. Next resolution is R19130, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and Jefferson County School District R1 for the Arvada- the Arvada High School Culinary Learning Garden Project. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is one of those agreements that we really like to bring to you. It would enable, based on your approval, it would enable us to partner with Arvada High School and Big Green, which is a national nonprofit that designs and builds learning gardens for schools, in order to submit an application to Great Outdoors Colorado so that Arvada High School can participate in this program. Now, the intergovernmental agreement that you're proposing, or that you're considering for approval tonight, would be implemented on the, based on our ability to win the grant from GOCO in order to make this program occur. We're fairly confident that we would submit an excellent grant application in order for this grant to be funded, and if it is funded and this agreement is full, this intergovernmental agreement is fully implemented, then we will be able to work with Arvada High School to provide this program. So we definitely recommend approval of the resolution. And we also have Emily Duncan from Arvada High School, I believe, there she is, who's going to make a few comments regarding this grant application.
Very good.
Hello, my name is Emily Duncan. I'm here to just show some of the work that we've been trying to collect with our students to introduce this learning garden and outdoor classroom and how we would be able to incorporate into our curriculum. And so at Arvada, we've been doing a sweep of kind of our curriculum base. We've brought in New Tech Network, which is a way of redesigning how we kind of go about our curriculum and our content and applying it towards problem-based and project-based type lessons, where they are going to connect their real-world applications with open-ended, solvable kind of questions and try to incorporate their content. So this is just an example of one of the projects that they had done as to the reasonings and the reasons why we, what we would use it for and such. So this is just an example of the research that they're going into and then how they would connect the dots between what this garden would give, not only our school, but also the city and the surrounding areas that would benefit from it.
Very good. Open up for Council questions or action. Ms. Ford.
I'd like to make a motion if there are no comments.
You may proceed.
I move that R nineteen dash one-thirty, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and Jefferson County School District R-dash-one for the Arvada High School Culinary Learning Garden Project be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Look forward to seeing the outcomes of this, so thank you for your work. We have one last resolution for tonight, R nineteen-one-thirty-one, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, on behalf of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and the city of Arvada, on behalf of the Arvada Police Department. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This resolution would allow for the Arvada Police Department to partner with the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, in the use of a sex offender tracking and registration system that would allow for web-based interactive software and tracking of sex offenders, which we're required to do. This is a, this is a application that's been implemented by Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and they actually are sharing it with regional law enforcement agencies throughout the Denver metro region. Our police department has taken a look at this and believes it could be applicable to what we do. Therefore, we've developed this agreement, and we're recommending the City Council's approval of the resolution in order to allow us to participate.
Mr. Jones.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no questions.
You may proceed.
I move that R nineteen dash one-thirty-one, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, on behalf of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and the city of Arvada, on behalf of the Arvada Police Department, be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Mr. Devon, thank our people for, it's always good to see us coordinating with other agencies for efficiencies and to address serious issues, so, good work. Next, Ms. Miller, are you capable to do first reading?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill nineteen dash zero-five-two, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada, Colorado, and Adams County for the purpose of completing a sub-area study of the area in the vicinity of Square Lake, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearing to be set for January sixth, two thousand and twenty, at six fifteen P.M.
Motion for approval on first reading. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have a ratification and approval of Planning Commission twenty nineteen oh-oh-oh-two, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the city of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the twenty-fourteen Arvada Comprehensive Plan as Arvada's Three Mile Plan pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute thirty-one-twelve-one-oh-five-one. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We'll have Planning Manager Rob Smetana briefly provide this item for you.
As mentioned, this is an annual resolution that we are, that we adopt pursuant to Colorado state regulations, simply stating that the three-mile plan, that we have adopted a three-mile plan, and that is our two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan, and that we have not made any annexations more than three miles, extending our boundary more than three miles, if that's in conflict with our comprehensive plan, which we have not in the past year. So we do recommend adoption of this resolution.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I do have a quick question, then I'll make the motion.
You may.
So how does this play in with the urban growth boundaries from Dr. Cog's rules? I mean, they must complement each other in some way or another.
Yes, that's part of the implementation of the state laws to have a growth boundary or growth area through the Dr. Cog process.
Okay, so this is part of that. And then is it, is it collectively three miles? Is that, is that, is that how the three miles is done, or is it?
It's any extension that would be more than three miles, which is difficult for us. We don't have the ability to do that.
Right, when you have the boundary and the swapping, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. It is a complicating math. Okay, I will move that Council Bill, or CP twenty nineteen dash zero-zero-zero-two, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the city of Arvada, Colorado, adopting the twenty-fourteen Arvada Comprehensive Plan as the Arvada's Three Mile Plan pursuant to Section thirty-one dash twelve dash one-oh-five, print-one, CRS, as amended by, be ratified and approved. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Next, we're going to consider the appeal of Certificate of Compliance with Design Guidelines or waiver regarding Grandview Station LLC property located at seventy-three-fifteen Grandview Avenue, seventy-three-seventeen Grandview Avenue, and seventy-three-eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue. There's a couple preliminary matters. First is going to involve Councilmember Nancy Ford. Ms. Ford.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask the City Council to allow me to recuse myself as I signed Mrs. Drianca's petition this past summer.
And I'm sure that when you signed that petition, you didn't know that this matter would come before us in a, in an appeal process, but it has, and upon advice of legal counsel, you've indicated that it would be appropriate to seek recusal or entertain a motion. Mr. Jones.
I move to allow Ms. Ford to recuse herself from this matter.
Votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Ford is going to recuse herself. She'll step down from the dais during this part of the proceeding and certainly welcome to remain in council chambers during the rest of this proceeding, and then we'll bring her back up when we move on to some other items. Okay, other preliminary matters that I want to address on this. First of all, there's a number of people who have signed up to speak during public comment on this. We have decided to allow that public comment. We will limit those individuals to two minutes each. We do have a number of people who have signed up for that. We will also be getting a presentation from the city first, and then from the appellant. We'll have, I believe, twenty minutes to make their presentation as well, and so, and we'll do both of those presentations before we move on to, to public comment on this issue. I want to disclose that, for me personally, I know, other than not knowing the developer who's doing this project, I know most of the players involved in this. The appellants, I've known for many years, and my wife shops at their store and has bought many lovely things there. We also frequent Breadwinners, which is also, I understand the owners of that establishment have been involved in these discussions. And I've known counsel for the appellant for many years and know his parents quite well and have great respect for all of them, none of which I think is going to influence my decision in this. I have not made a decision and do not intend to make any decision on this for me personally until after I hear all of the evidence. Ms. Simpson.
I would also like to disclose that I'm a frequent shopper of Carly's Boutique owned by Ms. Drianca, the appellant, and she did carry some of my campaign materials in her store. However, I am not going to allow that to influence my vote. I have also not decided how I will vote and wait to hear the testimony of the case.
Ms. Miller.
Same. I've been friends with the Drinkers for years, and I shop at the Carly's Boutique, fabulous clothes. None of this has influenced my decisions, and I have no idea how I'm going to vote. Waiting to hear all the testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Marion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also know the Drink family, and in fact, two of Lori's daughters have been my tenants in the past, and, but none of this will impact my decision in this matter in any way. I have not made up my mind, and will be waiting for all the completed public hearing before I decide.
Very good. One other matter that I do want to address before we begin, or a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to get some input from, from the city's legal counsel in the appellant's information that they've provided to us. The issue has been raised as to why are we hearing from the city team instead of from the original applicant on this project in these proceedings?
Your Honor, we have spent a lot of time looking at the city code that directs this process. The code does require that counsel hear this as a new matter, and the way that we interpret that provision is that counsel isn't bound by the decision of the director, by the recommendation of the Design Review Committee, or any determination that was made by the Planning Commission. You get to listen to everything brought before you tonight, and you get to consider that, and you get to reach your own conclusion, and that's how we interpret it. At this point, since the appeal is taken from the Certificate of Compliance, it makes sense, from a practical perspective, to have the Director of Community and Economic Development summarize that certificate, and that's really how, how we're coming to it. It's similar to when you have a determination made by a trial court that's appealed up to the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court. In cases where the Court of Appeals isn't bound by that trial court's determination, they still review that order before reviewing the facts, reviewing the law, and making their own determination. So that's the logic that got us to the process where we are today.
Okay, thank you. And then for the citizens who are in the audience, we appreciate that you're here. We look forward to hearing from you, and it will certainly have an impact upon our decision-making tonight. I would ask that you all treat each other civilly. One of the things we pride ourselves in Arvada is that when we conduct meetings such as this, we don't, all comments should be referred to City Council. Don't be turning around and pointing fingers at people you're disagreeing with or whatever. Let's not have mutterings under our breath of, you know, of statements that might intimidate people who are, who are yet to speak, and I know, and I'm totally confident that everyone will, will agree with that and comply with that, and that we will have civil discourse here tonight, and we look forward to, to hearing your input on this, on this issue as it comes before us. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city for their presentation.
Your Honor, I'll be starting us out, giving counsel an overview of the procedural steps that got us where we are, and also an outline of the process for this proceeding, although I may be able to skip over some of that, as you've outlined a little bit of it as well. This appeal comes before City Council concerning the development of property located at seventy-three-fifteen and seventy-three-seventeen Grandview Avenue and seventy-three-eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue. The project is being proposed by the owner of the property, Grandview Station LLC, which we call the applicant. Since the property is located in Old Town, Arvada, it is subject to the Old Town, Arvada Design Guidelines and must receive a Certificate of Compliance with the Design Guidelines before its development can continue through the process of city approval. The applicant submitted an application to the Director of Community and Economic Development for a Certificate of Compliance, including the waiver of certain Design Guidelines. After choosing to get input from the Design Review Committee and from a staff report, the director approved the application and issued a Certificate of Compliance. Ms. Drianca is an adjacent landowner to the property, appealed the director's decision to issue the Certificate of Compliance to the Planning Commission. After hearing the appeal on November five, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning Commission voted in favor of issuing a Certificate of Compliance. Ms. Drianca has now appealed the determination of the director, as approved by the Planning Commission, to City Council. City Council, in hearing this appeal, may decide to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. In making its determination, City Council must review the final revised application submitted by the applicant, the Certificate of Compliance, and the written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. The City Council may, in its discretion, also review the staff report, minutes from the DRC meeting, and minutes from the Planning Commission appeal hearing. In addition, the City Council may hear from staff, the applicant, Ms. Drianca, and/or receive public comment on the appeal from interested members of the public, which Council has indicated and intent to do. Council must consider the applicant's request for a Certificate of Compliance as a new matter. This means that while Council may consider the previous determinations as part of its decision, it is not bound by the previous determinations of the director or the Planning Commission. Based upon Council's review of the material and in consideration of the information presented to Council, Council must determine whether the project is in compliance with the Design Guidelines. For any guideline that Council finds is not met by the application, Council must apply the waiver criteria to that guideline to determine whether a waiver of that guideline is appropriate. With regard to demolition criteria, consideration of such criteria is not mandatory. If Council decides to apply the demolition criteria, then it may delay issuance of any demolition permit for up to ninety days. However, Council cannot deny the application based upon the proposed demolition of existing structures. If Council determines that the application is in compliance with the guidelines and any required waiver of certain guidelines meets the waiver criteria, then it should affirm the director's decision and approve the application. If Council determines that any required waiver of a guideline does not meet the waiver criteria, then Council has the option of either approving the application with conditions or denying the application. As you mentioned previously, Mayor Williams, for tonight's hearing, we will follow the same procedures as the Planning Commission. First, staff will have up to twenty minutes to provide a summary of the Certificate of Compliance. Second, Ms. Drianca, the party appealing the decision, will have up to twenty minutes to provide City Council with her position. Following these presentations, the City Council may, if they wish, allow for public comment. Following public comment, staff will have up to ten minutes to present any response to the applicant's position and/or to public comment. The City Council will then close the public comment portion to the hearing and open it up to City Council questions of either the staff or the appellant. At this point, Ryan Stachelsky, the Director of Community and Economic Development, will present a summary of the Certificate of Compliance.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to introduce myself and make sure that everybody could see me as, I'm Ryan Stachelsky. I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development, and, and I was the one that worked through this process and ultimately signed the Certificate of Compliance that's being appealed tonight. I realize that I am the, kind of the leader of that process and ultimately made that decision that is being appealed, but I also want to recognize members of our team that also were very much a part of the process that led us to being able to review the record, and so I'll introduce Rob Smetana. The planner for the project is Jeremiah Bebo, and then Jake Nichols is also a planner for the project, and so- And so, at times tonight, we also might be referring to them as they have some more intimate knowledge of some of the technical review of, of this process. So why am I up here tonight and what am I gonna talk about? I really want to talk about the process. You have the record in front of you. It's been made part of the packet. And so the things that Ms. Morris just outlined, you have the, the application, you have the public record from the Planning Commission, from the DRC, and then you have the staff report. You have the Certificate of Compliance and those items. And so those things are available for you to review and help make a decision on as to whether or not it meets the design criteria. This is a somewhat unique process for City Council because typically when they see a development project, like a PDP or something like that, they do not really look at design criteria that are, are in the code. Old Town is unique of having its own design criteria. They look at development standards, so things like setbacks and height and landscaping and those types of things. In this case, what you're being asked to look at tonight is really just that design criteria. And so the development standards are reviewed through an administrative process to make sure those have been met. And early on in this case, there was one development standard that could not be met, and that was the notion of having three stories with inside the height that is allowed as a development standard in Old Town. So thirty-two feet is what is allowed for this zone district in Old Town, and the applicant asked whether or not they could build three stories where only two were allowed. And that went to the BOA, the Board of Adjustment, and that was approved at that time. Given that they had then the right to build three stories, they continued to move forward in the development process with the development standards, and then went to apply for the design standards that are applied independently of those development standards. So when we're reviewing the design standards, there are, in this case, seventy-three different criteria that we look. There are many different design standards that are in Old Town, and depending on the nature of the case that you have, some may apply or not. In this case, many, many apply because it's a new construction, and therefore it kicks it into more design criteria. But if you were just making minor alterations to the exterior of your building, fewer design criterias would apply. So now that there was a application that could become forward to see if they could meet the design criteria, what the applicant did is they brought it to our staff, and it started going through the review process. And in that review process, what staff does is it looks for compliance of the design standards. And in most cases, and in fact, I think in all cases in Old Town, there have not been a project that is able to meet all of the design standards. And it's not necessarily intended that the design standards can all be met in its entirety. And so that's why the code contemplates the ability to allow for waivers to be issued as opposed to the strict compliance with the guidelines, hence the, the reason why they're guidelines and not mandatory. So in the review of the application, the staff says, "We believe that this is compliant. We think that this is not compliant." And what their goal is, is to minimize the number of waivers that would be required by a project. In this case, the staff went through three iterative review processes, each time kind of chipping away at some of their design ideas in order to bring it in more compliance. And at the end of the day, when staff wrote its staff report before it was presented to DRC, out of the seventy-three design, or design criteria that there were, they, staff believed that there were only two waivers that were required. One was related to the width of the windows and the space in between the windows, and one was related to an acknowledgement of the fact that a single-story residential home that's there now would have a more minimal impact than a larger-story building that is being proposed. And so both of those were acknowledged by staff as being things that the DRC should consider and may need a waiver on. Staff then, then referred the matter to the Advisory Committee of the DRC. So that's a committee that advises the director as to whether or not certain waivers should be warranted or not. After that review of the DRC, the DRC determined that nine total waivers should be considered. And so that's ultimately what was in the Certificate of Compliance. In order to reach that decision, what I did was I was not necessarily involved in the day-to-day review of this application. I didn't take the application in. I didn't review it. I didn't go through the iterative process to kind of make it in more conformance with those design criteria. What I did was, at the end of the day, I attended the DRC meeting, and I listened to the comment, although I didn't participate in the DRC meeting, I just, as a, as an observer. I reviewed the staff report, and the staff report, which you have in front of you, goes through all seventy-three of those criteria, and then it says why they would be justified or not. And then ultimately, what I did was I agreed with the recommendations of the Design Review Committee. The Design Review Committee is made up of technical experts, not only in being very familiar with the design criteria in Old Town, but also in their own right being architects and, and other folks in the industry that have good understanding of, of design criteria-type things. And so ultimately, I said, "These people know Old Town very well, and so it would be prudent of me to consider and to, to listen to them." And that's ultimately where we came to the conclusion of reviewing and accepting the Certificate of Compliancees with those waivers. I guess the last points that I wanted to make, and, and this came from more discussions related to demolition and, and other things like that. Part of the criteria is considering demolition. But what's important to note is that even if the buildings, the building, if the applicant requests that the buildings be demolished, the city only has the right to prevent the demolition of those buildings for ninety days. And so in Old Town, it, we, it's a little bit different than it works out in the rest of the city. If, in the rest of the city, if you're a property owner and you come in, you want a demolition permit, as long as you've met the criteria of the demolition permit, which are things like making sure your gas and electric are shut off, making sure that you have your asbestos abatement if your house is of a certain age or the buildings of a certain age, those types of things. So there are technical requirements relative to a demolition, not relative to whether or not it should or shouldn't be done. The property owner has that right. In Old Town, we have the ability to put that ninety-day moratorium, and what's intended is so that the city, if somebody comes in and says, "I want to demo that building tomorrow," if it has a historic designation or not, the property owner has that right. We could then say, "Hey, let's see if there's any alternatives out there." But at the end of the ninety days, if the property owner isn't swayed in one way or another to make a different decision, then we would be compelled to have to issue that demolition permit. So the only other thing that I wanted to bring up before I conclude is that it, I, as I mentioned, we have the record for you. You have all those things. If there are counsel questions later on, we have the PowerPoint of the different slides of the presentation. So if you want to ask questions about different design aspects or those types of things, obviously, our, our technical staff are here. I can answer the questions to the best of my ability. And more or less, just for reference, to be able to flip through some things, if you have a question about the design, we have that available to you, even though it wasn't my intent to present the project itself in, in that way. So with that, I'll conclude.
Yeah, and we'll make all the documentation we've received. Maybe we should list what those things are to make them part of the record. Would you recommend that?
That would probably be helpful, just so that we know everything that's in the record. I believe, have you received a binder tonight?
I have a separate binder tonight. Oh, yes, yes. Well, that's the appellants exhibits.
That's correct. When we get to that point, I do have a couple of comments about those.
Okay.
While, before we move on, I wanted to add something in addition to my previous answer regarding your question about why the applicant hasn't presented. I did want to point out that the bylaws for the DRC doesn't indicate that the applicant is required to present anything. So that's one of the other reasons that we relied on the summary of the Certificate of Compliance as opposed to having the applicant come back and present.
Okay, so for the record, we have the report to City Council Public Hearing, the standard cover sheet that we have for all of these matters that come before City Council. We have correspondence from the law firm of Foster, Graham, Milstein, and Kaufsir dated August 30th of 2019, also of September 20th, 2019, with regard to their position on some of the issues. We have the Certificate of Compliance with Design Guidelines or waiver that is the subject matter of this that has been signed, dated August 20th, 2019. We have the discussion with the, that full report as part of that. Then we have the minutes of the meeting of the Design Review Advisory Committee of August. Let's see, the date of that. Of what, August 15th, 2019? Thank you. Including the Grandview Station Design Review Committee submittal, which is plans and drawings. We have a number of photographs that were part of that. We have reports from Complete Engineering Services dated August 4th, 2014. We have PI Consulting and Engineering Report dated December 5th, 2014, including a number of photographs that were part of that. We have the December 5th, 2014, again, PI Consulting and Engineering. I believe it's for a dip, one of the other residents, correct? There's one report for each residence?
That's correct.
And photographs associated with that one as well. We have a... Looking for the title on this next one. The Denver Design Build has a proposal that's included a nature document that starts out "Nature of Request." It's page one of, that's thirty-six pages. We have a correspondence dated October 3rd, 2019, from the City of Arvada Community and Economic Development Department to the Planning Commission. Then we have Mr. Foster's law firm correspondence of November 12th, 2019, for the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval. Also correspondence of August 30th, 2019, appealing the Certificate of Compliance, again, from Mr. Foster. September 20th, 2019, from Mr. Foster. Summary minutes of the Planning Commission action held on November 5th, 2019, with those minutes, including public comments that were made. Then we had a number of, of public comments to City Council for the appeal, both by email, letter, and others that we have received this evening. And then we do have the pages of the, which I believe will be the documentation that you would use for the presentation of showing the slides of the project. So we've got those photographs as part of that. So I, I think that comprises the public, the record that will make part of the record that I know all of us have reviewed prior to coming here tonight for tonight's hearing, including a number of, as I indicated, a number of emails and letters that have been sent to the city regarding this matter.
Your Honor, I don't know if I heard you say that there is a compliance analysis dated July 29th, 2019.
Okay.
Just as a, so that we've got that on the record as well.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, Mr. Foster? Ms. Drenka, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
You just put it there, and we'll enlarge it so we can see it. And we can zoom in on that some? Maybe not quite that much. There we go.
Well, I'm going to be splitting the time with my fancy attorney I brought here, but I felt the need to get up here and speak to you all because this has been so near and dear to my heart. Good evening. My name is Lori Drenka. My husband Roger and I own the beautiful historic property at 7401 Grandview Avenue and another at 6440 West 60th Avenue. We've been in Old Town for nearly fifteen years now and run two successful businesses here. I'm not an us-and-them kind of person. My mother taught me to not ask what my community can do for me, but rather what I can do for my community, and I have lived by those words. I was instrumental in forming the original shopping districts and was very involved in forming the bid and the Friends of the Arvada Fire Department. I sit on the Board of HODA, the bid, Friends of the '04 Trolley, and the Arvada Historical Society. My property is adjacent to the proposed development. You can see by the developers' drawings, the shade study you received, the devastating effects that would have aesthetically as well as robbing our precious Colorado, excuse me, robbing us of our precious Colorado blue skies and sunshine. One of the reasons I'm sure that Benjamin Wadsworth chose this property to build on in 1874. I must say, though, I am doing this for my community. This is a nationally-recognized historic business district, a very small but very significant slice of history of not only Arvada, but the state of Colorado. There are only eleven historically contributing houses in the district. This proposal would demolish three of them. That's thirty percent. Taking out those houses and allowing that monstrosity to be built will fundamentally change the district, tearing apart the very fabric that is critical to the look and the feel of the district. This is a precedent-setting decision that could inevitably lead to further demolition with replacement by bigger and more modern buildings until Old Town no longer exists. With this, we quite possibly could lose our historic designation and the benefits it provides to property owners and to everyone. People come from everywhere to visit this Old Town. It's a source of civic pride and the vibrant hub of Arvada. It's the heart of the city. Although everyone was aware that I was opposed to this from the beginning, I received no notice, like my neighbors who informed me, thank goodness, of the neighborhood meeting held early in the year after failed attempts by the developers to get to this to DRC. The Directory, Director of Community Development vowed to let me know when it would go to DRC but failed to do so. Ryan contacted me while I was out of town immediately after the meeting to express his concern. I've become the point person for our neighborhood and the fellow, and fellow property owners who rely upon me for information. Because of this error, no representation opposing was present except for the Arvada Historical Society reps, who were informed by a city planner who paid them a visit to the meeting, prior to the meeting, to inform them of it. Unfortunate that that planner didn't walk into my business conveniently located half a block away to inform us. That is a huge omission, to not have Old Town stakeholders there. For some reason, Ryan didn't stop the meeting and admit he had spoken to me a few weeks before or take other measures to stop the demolition of houses located right next to my property, other than the thirty-day hold. I have great faith in the city, of which I have become a part over the past fifteen years, but feel the system has been used by Mr. Palmer and his supporters of this project, who all but one gained to benefit financially to snowball and gaslight this thing without public awareness. In a historic district, property owners... In a historic district, property owners have access to financing methods that would disappear if we lose that designation. We have an insurance policy called Design Review Guidelines that have been put in place and updated over time with the involvement of the city, the community, and consultants. The process of the current guidelines took over three years. That is a huge investment on the part of all and should be given, and should give property owners some protection from this atrocity. As I have come to understand, the workings of the historic districts, Design Guidelines are put in place to protect the district. They prevent us from doing things that would harm us. Nowhere in the body of that huge document does it allow for demolition of any historically contributing structure. One of the overarching goals is to preserve the residents on the east side of the district. How then is this possible? Well, in the appendix of that document has demolition criteria, but clearly treats demolition as a last choice. In this case, Mr. Palmer extracted that and took off with his plan to destroy our history to line his pockets. Now he cites economic hardship as the reason. He's the one who paid what he paid for those properties. This took years. He knew what he was buying and why he was buying it. He has been upfront about wanting to tear them down. There were no surprises that created an economic hardship. The blanks were filled in to support the foregone conclusion. We have been on a path of historic preservation for over 35 years. Tens of millions of dollars have been invested, and so many properties restored to their former glory. ARA and the city have made decisions years ago to not bulldoze Old Town. Instead, they brought it back. We all know that decision is the reason we have what we have. Don't you wonder why the little houses on Grand View are now unsafe and need to be boarded up with ugly fencing, et cetera? With all the other structures in Old Town, many older are still standing. They've been occupied consistently during the time I've been here. The city hasn't shut them down. The tenants haven't been harmed. My mother-in-law lived in one for over four years. Do you think Roger and I would put her in an unsafe home? When she passed away, Mr. Palmer entered into a lease with us so we could open a gifts and collectibles store there. Do you think we would put a business in a decrepit house and put any of our customers at risk? No. We have cared for that house and see it as the beautifully restored historic house it is, at least inside. The scare tactics of Mr. Palmer have hurt our town and shows the degree of disrespect for what so many of us hold dear to our hearts. Let's consider our process on this project. Prior to a full vetting of whether contributing structures can and should be demolished, the developer sought a variance with a positive staff report from your staff to allow for more stories than the zoning permits. Only then, after the developer had his variance in hand, did he go to the Design Review Committee for what should have been the first step, a determination of whether demolition of these contributing structures is appropriate or not. This backwards process resulted in the Design Review Committee having its hands tied, according to one member of Design Review. After a long-serving member resigned because of this, another longstanding member of Design Review has personally told me that the houses aren't protected like mine because nothing important happened in them. This is completely false and shows the lack of information this board had when acting on something so important to our city, state, and beyond. The issuance of nine waivers to further the green lighting completely negates the intention of Design Review Guidelines. Waivers are exceptions to the rules. How many exceptions does it take to eliminate the rule? In this case, nine was sufficient. In the case of other properties, more, some less. Waivers are not intended to get around the rules. Because of all of this, because of my love of Old Town and because I have to protect my property, Roger and I have had to spend tens of thousands of dollars of our own money. I won't ever get that back, just like we will never get back that which we destroy. We aren't alone in our defense of Old Town. Over 1,600 people signed online a petition to save the face of Old Town. I submitted a supplement to that that brings it up to almost 17. They made over 10 pages of comments. Hundreds more signed a paper petition. Seventeen property owners representing an estimated upwards of $50 million investment sent letters to the developer voicing their opposition to this proposed disaster. Two state entities, CPI and SHPO, Jefferson County, and our own historical society, have submitted letters and voiced their concern. People have come to Old Town specifically to see what is going on. This is of huge concern to all who love Old Town. I believe that this property should not be treated as an all-or-nothing proposition. We must be creative and find a way to preserve in part this property and put this property to use that adds to the character of the Old Town Arvada Historic District. I am not a developer. I'm a creator of good things. Each of these properties should be looked at individually for their value. It is possible to preserve and develop and create something special. The proposed building is not special. Grand View Avenue is the face of Old Town. I believe, as so do, as do so many, that the houses on Grand View must be preserved. The others can then be looked at for possibilities and redeveloped if needed? This could be a win-win situation. Property rights are not absolute. Property ownership, especially in a historic district, comes with great responsibility. If this property owner is not up to the task, others would take it on. Now we look to you, Council, to say, let's take a closer look and stop this conclusion that has been arrived at through misrepresentation and the omission of public input. You are the caretakers. Previous caretakers have delivered a beautifully vibrant historic district to you. Will you pass it on? I'd like to ask that all that oppose the demolition of these houses and the reversal of the erroneous decision to allow this to stand up now. So you can see the outpouring of support here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. My name's David Foster. I guess I am the fancy attorney, but I have not shopped at Lori's place yet. That will change, I am sure. Listen, I want to go through a few things. One is, we're here to determine whether or not this Certificate of Compliance is appropriate and should have been issued. And I've taken issue with a few of the ways in which your staff has interpreted the code. You know, leave it to two or three lawyers to come up with three or four opinions. The standard of review is de novo. You do sit in the shoes of the planning director, not in his head, and so you get to make your own determination. But this Certificate of Compliance was issued, and you'll see it on there, it's for the demolition of three historically contributing buildings and the construction of a new mixed-use building, and that's described as a land use activity. I have to tell you, I am fundamentally in opposition to this belief that the City Council, the staff, does not have authority over a demolition permit in Old Town. And let me explain, and it's frankly not that complicated. The, the, the nature of the district is created, and I've included a number of exhibits, and the first is Section 3.30.1, which is Certificates of Compliance with Design Guidelines. General rule, within the Old Town zoning district, a land use activity as defined in Article 10 of this code shall be prohibited unless the Community Development Director has first issued a certificate. A land use activity, you'll flip to the last page of that same exhibit.
Which exhibit number is that?
It's one.
Okay.
Land use activity, the erection alteration in addition to renovation, restoration, relocation, or demolition of the exterior of a structure. The city has absolute authority, as it's a land use activity within the historic district, to review the demolition criteria, and either to issue the Certificate of Compliance or not to issue the Certificate of Compliance. It's no different than the building permit process that needs a Certificate of Compliance. It's, it's right there. And frankly...
Mr. Foster, I apologize. I won't take this out of your time, but I just wanted to make sure that we're clear for the record. Are you intending to admit these exhibits into the record for this hearing?
Yeah, this is, yes, my exhibit book, yes.
Okay. So if we could go over those one by one, that would be great, because I have a couple of objections on some of them.
Oh, great. Yes, that'd be fine. You want to do that now?
Yeah.
Great.
We could do that, and we'll, we won't take this out of your time.
Right now, it's just fine.
Yeah, we won't take this out of your time. So the first one, if we can just get, and this was the one that you just referred to, I don't have any objection to this. This looks like a couple of different sections, one out of our land development code and one out of a different area. Can you explain for us where those two things came from?
I think that's the definition section from the code, is it not the, the land use activity?
The 10.3?
Yes.
Is that part of the land development code?
Land development code, correct.
Okay. And then Exhibit 2, can you explain what that is?
This is the application that you, as a, as a city, sent to the National Registry for the creation of the Old Town District.
Okay. And then, and I don't have any objection to that one either. I just want to make sure we get this clear for the record.
That's fine. Oh, no, I appreciate that.
Then Exhibit 3, can you explain that one for me? Describe it for me.
Yes, this is, these are the criteria from Appendix A in the Design Review Guidelines. And what we've done is, we use this as a, a way to understand that A.1, A.2, those are ways in which to better understand the differing criteria, because you'll see in the Certificate of Compliance as a reference to A.5 and A.6, but in the appendix itself, it doesn't have A.5 and A.6. So we just created this document in order for you to better understand the sections of that code.
And I understand the intent behind it, but both Exhibits 2 and Exhibit 8 are portions of the Design Review Guidelines, but they aren't a full copy of the actual section.
Of the Design Review Guidelines?
Not of the entire Design Review Guidelines, but of the section that you cite. So for instance, in Exhibit 2, there is language that precedes what you have on here.
Exhibit 2 is the...
Oh, not Exhibit 2, I apologize. Exhibit 3.
Yeah.
There's language that precedes the sections of the Design Review Guidelines that you have there.
Okay.
That it's missing. And so that, I have an issue with that being part of the record for that reason. I just don't, I want our record to be clear, and I don't, I don't want partial sections of the code admitted. I have the same issue with Exhibit 8.
The entire Design Review Guidelines should be a part of the record.
Okay. So as long as we're agreed on that...
Hundred percent.
I just don't want Exhibits 2 and 8 to really, to make things unclear for Councils as they're making their decision.
I think the entire Design Review Guidelines, I thought they were already part of the record, and I was just pulling out certain portions, but they should, of course, be a part of the record.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other issues with any of the other exhibits?
No, I don't. I, I don't have any issues with any of the other exhibits.
Well, I'm going to play lawyer up here.
Oh, please.
And say that we will accept as part of the record all of the exhibits and give them whatever weight we decide to give them.
You are certainly entitled to do that, Mr. Mayor. The, so, the, the point that I think I was just finishing up was that land use activities are defined in the land development code, and it does include a demolition. And I, I think you want to know that. I think you would want to know that you have the authority to approve or not approve a demolition permit within a historic district. What's the alternative? The alternative is, the only guidelines that are applicable are for new building, not for the demolition of structures. And that would work, that would be counterintuitive, that, and in fact, when the planning director was up here explaining this, this concept, if in fact it's the belief within the city that you don't have authority to deny a demolition application, then I can understand how you would spend a lot of time trying to ensure that the projects that are coming in front of you get close, or at least follow the Design Guidelines, because you have no other alternative than to preserving those existing structures. But you do have the ability to preserve those existing structures and to deny a demolition permit in this historic district as it's a land use activity. The second exhibit that I have is this application to the National Registry. Now, I, I'm spending a lot of time over in Denver fighting people who are trying to designate historic properties over the objection of people, over their own objections. Here's an application that you all sent to the National Registry, and I've tabbed three different page, excuse me, three different pages. The first page I tabbed is, these three properties in particular were identified. That's relevant, because the second tab is, is that you see that these three properties were identified as contributing structures to the district. And the final tab that I have there is an acknowledgement by the owners themselves, because you needed all of the owners to participate in a designation of a historic district, and that's what they did back in 1997, when this application was sent to the National Registry. And now you ultimately sit as the stewards to protect Old Town Arvada and the fabric of the community. And as you know, Old Town is, is a significant destination in Arvada. The Exhibit 3 that we have here identifies the design criteria, the demolition criteria. And again, I ask the question, if you have criteria for demolition, why would you have criteria for demolition if in fact you have no authority to approve or not approve a demolition? So it's, just kind of put that question out there. You have this demolition review criteria, and we believe that the application doesn't meet the criteria. And I want to go through a number of these particular criterion. So the, on page 43, by the way, of the Design Guidelines, it states, and those are a part of the record, that demolition of a contributing structure is inappropriate. So use that as your, your overarching kind of understanding as to where City Council had considered the importance of a contributing structure in 2013, when they adopted those last Design Guidelines. Moving to Criteria A.3 on this sheet, you'll see that it identifies that an ordinance is to be created in order to recognize the importance of this district. And that's what you did in 2013. You entered this Ordinance Council Bill 13005, Ordinance 4374, and you'll see in Section 1, the Design Guidelines generally regulate the erection, alteration, addition to renovation, restoration, relocation, or demolition. So you've identified that you do have the authority for demolition, and then you adopted the Design Guidelines that we've been talking about for the past few minutes. The next exhibit is an exhibit that I think is important, because this is an acknowledgement that owners within the district understood. They have a responsibility of ownership within a historic district. And I'll, I'll let you read that on your own, on your own time, but I wanted to at least acknowledge that those people who invested their properties into this district for Old Town have a belief in a responsibility of ownership going forward. The, the next criterion, Criterion 5 and 6, are really pivotal in this discussion today. 5 is that the Design Guidelines for Old Town Arvada, that they need to be met in order to approve the demolition criteria. And A.6 is more relevant and really more palpable in today's conversation. And really, I would just direct your attention to just the questions underneath that criteria. Would removal of this historic structure affect the relationship of similar buildings in the area? Is the new design proposed in its place compatible? What the planning director has done in this case is he has issued a waiver for that review criteria, because it can't be met. It can't be met because it's not compatible. It's not compatible because, perhaps because of the nine waivers that we've already discussed. And I think it's relevant to at least look at a couple of the building waivers. The first is minimizing the impacts to primary views from existing private structures, maximizing solar access for all properties, and maintaining traditional size of buildings as perceived as at the street level. Those are waivers, because this project can't meet them. In addition to that, as was mentioned, this project received a variance from the Board of Adjustment to go from two to three stories, increasing the FAR by 50%. It's not compatible. It's not compatible, and therefore, the planning director felt it was warranted a waiver so that it didn't need to meet that demolition criteria. And it was issued under a section of the code that deals with strict compliance creating an economic hardship. Lori spoke to some of the economic hardship issues, and if I have time, I'll get to those in a moment. Criteria A.7, which is the last of the initial criteria, there are two sets of criteria for demolition in your code, or in, in the Design Guidelines. And this is a question as to whether or not the demolition of the historic buildings would weaken the overall integrity of the district and thereby negatively affect the city's special historical value. 30% of the, of the contributing residential structures as identified in your district will be eliminated with this approval. 30% of those structures. At some point, your district no longer... At some point, your district no longer meets the standards that it once met when it was approved by the National Registry. And I've included, just for your edification, under Tab Seven, is removing properties from the National Register. And you'll see that the property, if the property has ceased to meet the criteria for listing in the National Register, because the qualities which caused it to be originally listed have been lost or destroyed. Why is that relevant? People decide to put their properties either into districts, if there's a district, or they decide to have their properties identified as historic themselves. So you can either have a structure that's historic, or you can be in a historic district. Sometimes you can have a historic building in a historic district. But people are able to take advantage of tax credits and other grants from the feds when properties are within these districts. That's one of the purposes of creating a district, so that you can use tax credits in order to make improvements or enhancements to preserve the structures that are in the district. And for those lists of people that you've already seen from 1997, who said, "Yeah, we're in. We're in. We want to be in this district. We're putting our properties into this district because we see meaning there," that's possibly lost, if a district is lost. And I'm, again, there is a, I know that we are taught in law school not to argue the old slippery slope. Might tell ya, this is a case where the slippery slope really, really does come into play. Because if, if it is the council's decision tonight that demolition permits are not reviewable, that there is no authority to grant or deny a demolition permit, got a lot of properties within that historic district that I'm concerned no longer will exist. You want to have the authority to approve demolitions within a historic district, not elsewhere in your city. I, I've seen the demolition permit and the limited criteria within that. But when you're in the district, it's a land use activity, and it is regulated. Then we have the second set of criteria, and that's under Exhibit Eight. Exhibit Eight gives us a whole host of additional criteria within the Design Guidelines related to demolition. And I'll just focus on the first two. B one, what is the assurance that the new project will be completed if demolition occurs? And you'll see from the staff report, the answer is that the developer has every intention to proceed. And so that's the level of confidence that you have as a city if you demolish four structures, three of which are contributing. Every intention to proceed. That's from staff report, page twenty-eight. B two deals with, and Lori spoke to this, and I think it's worth one more minute, alterations to demolition. This doesn't have to be an all or nothing proposition. You've, you've been presented with an all or nothing proposition. You've been presented with a, "We'd like to take all four buildings down and put up this three-story project." That's all you've been given a chance to review, and I understand that. But the reality is, is that there's give and take. And there are two properties on Grandview that may be worth preserving, maybe at the expense of the two properties on Fifty-seventh. And maybe there's a compromise there, where you keep the majority of those contributing structures, and you build something new as well in the district. But that's not something for you to review tonight, but that's something you should review. Those are the kinds of alterations to demolition that you should be asking about, that you should be considering. And then finally, as Lori mentioned, under Exhibit Nine, that's just a snippet from the costs associated with rehabilitation from the staff report from the applicant. But this notion of an economic hardship, frankly, I'm having a hard time understanding how a developer potentially overpays for ground, knowing that it's in a historic district, recognizing the increased costs of rehabilitation or renovation, and then shows up to, to the city and to the staff and claims, "We can't do this. We can't, we can't protect these properties." Well, you, you probably should have known that before you bought the property. And you'll see in the staff report, the staff spends a decent amount of time talking about that an economic return of seven percent is reasonable. And if this developer can't achieve a seven percent return, then it may not be economically viable. Well, those are the kinds of, I've been a developer's attorney for a long time. This is the kind of due diligence that developers do before they buy the property, not after they buy the property. This isn't a consideration, this isn't your problem. I mean, they're making it your problem, but it isn't your problem. It's a problem that a developer may have spent too much money on property. It's a problem that a developer might just have the wrong plan in this location. And so we would ask that you not approve this Certificate of Compliance. You certainly don't have any good rationale to approve the waivers, certainly for the economic hardship. And you can see that it's just frankly not in keeping with what the folks of Old Town initially anticipated, anticipated back in 1997. You're, you're the stewards of Old Town, and this decision rests with you. We appreciate your time. Happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think the record should reflect that I allowed you to go along, longer than twenty minutes even, considering the interruptions we had.
I, I do appreciate your time. This is a, it's, it's a complicated issue. I appreciate that.
Complicated issue. I'd rather get everything heard. Okay. So at this point, it would be appropriate for us to take public testimony?
Briefly, Your Honor, we had scheduled in about ten minutes for, well, actually, yes, you're right, public comment, and then we have the city reply.
Right. Okay, I have a number of people, I'm, receive them in a variety of order, so I will simply call some in favor, some are opposed to the request for the appeal. I'll start with Joyce Pavoya, and then Phil Shell, and then Cindy Kreitzer will be the first three.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Pavola. I live at fifty-eight fifty-five Vance Street. And I, when I moved to Arvada twenty years ago, I immediately joined the newly-formed HODA Historic Old Town Arvada Association. I was on the Board of Directors. We were trying to make a success of the businesses in Old Town. And over the years, we saw many fail, unfortunately, but I'm happy that breadwinners and Eli Ashley are still there. And my objection is that we were trying to keep the historic value and appearance of Old Town. We joined the Main Street USA Organization to help us, and we want, Arvada, Old Town Arvada is a historic place. We want to keep it looking that way, but with the success of the people who live and own businesses there.
Thank you. Mr. Shell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm in favor of the project. I was on the Urban Renewal Authority when the Urban Renewal Authority turned their attention to Old Town to try to revitalize it. A lot of the arguments that are being made this evening against the project were made on the same buildings on the corner of Old Wadsworth and Grandview. There was buildings removed there. There was residences removed there. And I don't think anybody today would look at those buildings and say they're inappropriate. There is critical mass, you guys are certainly familiar with that term, that is emerging in Old Town, largely due to a lot of the merchants that are down there and a lot of the reconstruction that's gone on, the facade grants, the rebuilding of the streets, all of the decisions that were made and put into place by boards like yourselves in those years. In addition, we have the light rail. And it's very difficult to take an asset like that light rail and not consider transit-oriented development. And in this particular case, you've got a residential development that is not only residential in the heart of Old Town, but also it is for sale residential, which is very, very hard to come by in today's economy. So I would encourage the Council to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, and then Mark Teska?
Good evening. Cindy Kreitzer, ninety-two hundred Grandview, eight triple O two. Hopefully you guys have the list of my, the reasons I am supporting this project already on your, in front of you.
Yes.
So I won't go through all of those. I have a lot to say, and in two minutes, it's gonna take, be quick. It's a bit odd to be up here, speaking in support of an Old Town project, since that's never happened in the seven years that I've been speaking out about development in Arvada. And by the way, as far as the Design Review Committee meeting, I didn't have any problem finding out when it was and knowing that it was happening. I was there. And I do want to add that I understand most of the folks that are here tonight to oppose the project. I've been there. I think in the long run, they might be pleasantly surprised. Grandview Station will add some retail space that could lengthen the distance that shoppers will walk and bring new customers to existing businesses. It is designed to enhance the exterior faces of other Old Town buildings, and has incorporated citizen suggestions into the design. And to say that they have not been asking for any kind of citizen input just is not correct. I've given them a lot of input, and they've pretty much incorporated all of it. We need to find a happy medium somewhere between the doing nothing in Old Town and leaving it just as it is, or building more two or three hundred unit apartment complexes that literally build walls around Old Town. There's got to be someplace in between. And I believe very strongly that this project has done that. And we've heard a ton of things about demolition of these two little houses, but nobody has mentioned that the developer has already offered many times to move these houses at his expense anywhere someone else would like to put them. That's not been brought up. Rather than demolishing them, he says, "I'll move them. Just give me a place to put them, and I will do that." So it's not completely about just demolishing the houses, at least the two. He would be happy to move, rather than demolish.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kreitzer.
Thank you very much.
Mark Teska, and then Karen Miller? And then Rachel Zenzinger?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Mark Teska, sixty-one forty-one Ammon Street. I'm here to speak in favor of the Certificate of Compliance and in opposition to the appeal. While I don't have the expertise to determine whether the application meets the demolition criteria or some of the other technical issues in the appeal, I do speak in support of the project. Historic districts certainly serve a purpose to challenge any unfettered development in an older community. However, it seems that the historic label for these properties is at best loosely attached to the structures in question. I'm a frequent patron of Old Town Arvada, living within one mile of Old Town. And these, the proposed project blends with the current look and feel of other recent Old Town projects. This will be an immense improvement over the current blight. The project has gone through an appropriate, public, and transparent process, and development like this is a direct consequence of having a desirable community, and we should welcome this type of project. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Miller, then Rachel Zenzinger, then Randall Lamp.
Good evening. My name is Karen Miller. I own property at seventy-four oh one Grandview. I have to say, I've been involved throughout this process, except the Design Review Committee. And the design criteria for demolition really hasn't been talked about. It's been talked about almost as if this was one piece of land and a proposed new building. The design, or the criteria for demolition exists for a reason. As far as the economic hardship, this cited forty-five dollars per square foot is high for Old Town. But if you look at some of the other buildings lately that have sold, the Arvada Tavern Building sold for one point five million, and based on rentable square feet, they'd have to charge fifty-six dollars to get their, their seven percent return. The two new buildings on Grandview and Old Wadsworth would have to charge sixty, and that's before the CAM expense. So it's not totally unreasonable. I've been a CPA for thirty-five years, and, you know, numbers are, we can use numbers for us, and we can use numbers against us. And there's a lot of pages of estimates with the, with the repair for all of these structures. Those estimates have really gone up exponentially from two thousand fourteen to nineteen. Now, we know costs have gone up, but four times, when he bought the house in two thousand fifteen, a sixty-nine thousand dollar estimate to repair that house based, plus the seventeen hundred he was getting in rent, would have given him easily his seven percent return. But honestly, they've been upfront. They didn't want to fix up those houses. They wanted to come in and build a new building. I would ask the City Council to please consider that demolition criteria, and look at each of these. This is three properties, four structures, bought on two different transactions. This isn't just one transaction that just happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Zenzinger?
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Rachel Zenzinger, and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself as a citizen. It is not too long ago that I was sitting where you are sitting, and so I know how thoughtful each of you are as individuals, as well as a council body. And I know that each of you care deeply about your community, and I want to thank you very much for serving. I'm not here tonight to tell you what to do. I know, shocking. But I do want to offer up a perspective on historic preservation and its benefits to the state of Colorado and to communities like ours, because I think it's a perspective that's worth noting. The city has done a tremendous job of investing in historic Old Town Arvada over the years, and that investment is starting to pay off. Old Town is known for its historic charm, and it's a special place that attracts visitors far and wide. The preservation of our historic communities and resources help define our communities and ourselves as individuals. These resources make up the look and fabric of where we live, work, and play. Furthermore, historic preservation increases community identity and pride. It provides opportunities to attract heritage tourism. It uses existing public investments. It generates jobs, increases property values, and it increases spending in the local economy. I have here a bunch of cumulative economic impacts of historic preservation for the state of Colorado, but I'm running out of time. So I will simply end with that historic Old Town Arvada is a prime example of effective placemaking, and it's the historic part of that that makes that come to fruition. With that in mind, I simply ask that the Council pause and rethink if there's a compromise to be had here. There could be unintended consequences from this decision that impacts Old Town Arvada's wonderful historic charm. And I ask that you think of those comments that I've made here tonight. Thank you very much for your time and for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. Randall Lamp, and then Laura Reed?
Hello, I'm Randall Lamp. I live at six-seven-seven-three Swadley Court, and I think I marked that I wasn't gonna speak, but I'll go ahead and speak.
Okay.
I feel like a despatched observer. I've moved here ten years ago with my wife, and Old Town was pretty quiet back then, and I think the Council needs some kudos for, for the vibrant situation that exists down there. And that might give you an opportunity too, to, to, you know, get off the accelerator a little bit and, you know, preserve what you can for history. In my email, I actually pointed out that when I moved to Nashville, Tennessee in the nineteen seventies to go to college, the Grand Ole Opry had moved out of town to the suburbs. Downtown Nashville was dead. Then the Ryman Auditorium was being looked at to be torn down. So fortunately, they didn't tear down the Ryman Auditorium, and fortunately for you, your decision isn't that critical. But nonetheless, it is an opportunity, if you do have the power to make the decision, you can't, you can't undo things. This is an opportunity, if you have the power, to consider the feel of it. Right now, as a despatched observer, I'd have to say, eyeballing it, yeah, you want to keep it, you want to keep it as historic as you can. I found it very interesting, and I think you should consider to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Laura Reed has indicated she's in opposition but does not wish to speak, or...
No, I'm going to speak.
[laughing]
I'm a property owner at seventy-four oh three Grandview Avenue. I'm going to read a letter from Kim Grant, Director of CPI Endangered Programs.
And we do have that letter.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Over the past couple of years, Colorado Preservation Incorporated has watched, with increasing concern, the struggle to save two small contributing historic residential properties in the Arvada Downtown National Register Historic District. The district was created in nineteen ninety-eight under the leadership of City Council, dedicated staff, and concerned citizens. citizens who are committed to preserving the distinctive character and identity of Arvada's historical commercial district, both for its inherent value and its strategy for revitalizing the area. This process was and continues to be the key to the success of Old Town area. Actions that endangered the integrity of the district, and in particular the core access along both Old Town, Old Wadsworth, and Grandview threaten to undermine or overwhelm the success of the district, has played out in other parts of the Denver metro area. The strength and uniqueness of the Arvada Downtown Historic District lies in the intermingling of building types and functions in the early city, including early residents, public buildings, community meeting halls, and religious institutions within its boundaries. The two properties in question, 7315 and 7317, add to the historic association's historic architectural qualities or archaeological values for which the property or district is significant. Demolition of contributing properties erodes the integrity of the district, weakens its significance, and can lead to its removal from the national register. Such an action would amount to the betrayal of the original version that the city had led. Beyond demolition, the replacement of contributing buildings with developments that disrupt the delicate fabric of the district does further harm to the community and its integrity. CPI urges city council to rethink the demolition of these two contributing properties and the proposed development that seeks to replace them in the interest of saving the unique character of Old Town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki Wolf indicated she did not wish to speak, but is opposed to the director's decision. Darlene Seisper? And then Jane Schnitzel?
My name is Darlene Seisper, and I actually live in Wheat Ridge, just a few blocks outside of Arvada, but I frequently shop in Arvada. But I'm here more to speak on the historical significance of these buildings. History is not only made by famous people. Ordinary people who contributed to the growth and creation of Arvada are also important. 7315 Grandview was originally owned by Robert Fiesel and Bertha Fiesel. Robert was a veteran of World War I. He worked at the Medical Department at Camp Beauregard, Louisiana, where he treated soldiers battling influenza. His wife, Bertha, was a volunteer with the Disabled Veterans Women's Auxiliary. He and his wife are both buried in Fort Logan National Cemetery. After Robert's death, Bertha sold the house to Tammy Ray, who, we won't go through the transactions there, but eventually she and Bruce Ray sold it to the current developers. 7317 Grandview Avenue was originally owned by Naomi Shriver and Floyd D. Shriver. They were both born in the 1890s. Both of these houses were built in 1909. He owns a patent. He works for Denver Equipment Company, which was famous at the time for its equipment in the mining industry. He also was a big collector of prehistoric arrowheads and prehistoric tools, hammers, and other kinds of things, and that collection was sold from his estate, which was also a loss to this community, but it still holds his name. Sellers of these tools, you can find them online, pictures of them. They still say it comes from the Floyd Shriver collection. These are historic facts about these buildings that were not found in the original surveys, because they really did not do a study into the individuals who had lived there. I found these in a few hours.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Jane Schnabel? Schnabel, I'm sorry.
S-C-H-A-P-E-L. Okay. 7005 Grandview Avenue in the Stocky Walter Historic District. And I wanted to just make a comment before I begin my comments, that I have not talked with Ms. Drenka or Mr. Foster before I wrote my comments. So maybe great minds think alike. I don't know. As a 47-year-old Arvada resident, 27 years in the Stocky Walter Historic District, I have been an ardent supporter of the Old Town Historic District, working tirelessly in numerous ways over the years to make sure Old Town maintains its place as a Colorado role model for historic preservation. That's taken from the article in the newspaper in October, when Old Town was, through the American Planning Association, they were named Colorado's first great place. And over the years, I have attended and given input at the many, many public meetings held for the development of the Old Town Design Guidelines in 2005 and again in 2012. These were put in place to help maintain historic preservation in Old Town. I question now, why is it so easy to sweep aside these guidelines and allow the historic structures to, on Grandview, to be demolished and replaced with a development completely out of character with Old Town? If this is allowed, another historic structure, Dr. Russell's historic home, now the Eli Ashby Healing Arts Center and Carly's Boutique, next door at 7401 Grandview, will be demolished. This poster house of Old Town will be lost in the three-story monstrosity that is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Jesse Kaufman? And then Steve Howards.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I think I also marked not to speak also, but I'll come also. I've been here for 43 years, and for, ever since I was 21, I've been a part of the Arvada Junior Chamber, and been a part of making that part of the historical Old Town. And this project doesn't only threaten the integrity of the historical community, it also threatens us. You know, it could run us out of the community, and we're a community-based organization, and we do many things for the community. So, you know, that's just something else to think about. It's not only, you know, ruining the integrity of the community, but also other factors within the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Howards, and then Dora McKee.
My name is Steve Howards. We own over 20,000 square feet of historic commercial property in Old Town, Arvada. Most of it, actually, all of it's located on Grandview Avenue. We've invested literally millions of dollars in Old Town. I really wish I could support this project, because I've been thinking about it a lot over the last few months, but I can't. And I can't because there are just too many unanswered questions. I mean, must a building, must a building be this large to be economically viable? I don't know. Could the existing historic structures be integrated into a future development? I don't know. Could a smaller project, more complementary to Old Town, be economically viable? I just don't know. So I can't support the project, because there are too many unanswered questions. Now, I'm also really bothered by the process, very bothered by the process, because there were no city-sponsored public hearings. There was no oversight by elected decision-makers. And if Lori hadn't invested tens of thousands of dollars, we wouldn't be having this public hearing right now. And that's just wrong. That's not the way local government's supposed to work. And I've got to tell you, it really, it really sticks in my craw. One of the properties we own is Arvada's first post office. It was built in 1890 at 7417 Grandview Avenue. You know, when I look at the property, it only takes up a third of the lot. It's a one-story building. You know, maybe we should raise it. Maybe we should come before the city, you know, and given the fact that we've got this potential precedent being set here, maybe we should propose a three-story contemporary building instead of Arvada's first post office. And you know something? We could do that without having city-sponsored public hearings, and we could do that without, you know, without transparent decision-making. And that upsets me, and I hope it upsets you as well, because what I'm really concerned about here is the precedent-setting nature of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Okay. Thank you.
Dora McKee, and then Deborah Andrews.
My name's Dora McKee, and I live at 5802 West 60th Avenue. And I am opposed to this project for several factors. One, I'm a fourth generation of Arvada, and I was raised coming to Old Town, and it's quaint, family, homey feel. It was nice to be able to know that you would come down here, and it was nothing like Denver, where it's busy, cars everywhere. You didn't have to worry about much. And it says it in its name, "Old Town." And if we take away these, these historic buildings, like was stated before, that's 30%, that's almost half of what's left. Might as well take the name out of it. It's no longer going to be "Old Town." It's going to lose its charm. It's going to lose its factor. Anybody that comes from out of state that I know, I take them to Old Town. I take them to Breadwinners. We go to Carly's Boutiques. We shop all the districts, and they love it. They love how it's, it's got its old charm, it's antique-ish, it's homey, it's kind of, you know, still kind of western, and they always want to come back and see it. And as was said earlier, the developer has stated that he'll move the historic buildings. That's really nice of him, but are we going to have to come before you again to make sure that he does it and make sure that it's done right? And then where are you guys going to put them? You know, if you were to build this, it is too large. It's awful. It fits all the guidelines, but it's still contemporary in a way. And it's way too large, and it just doesn't fit. It's going to bring too much cars to the roads. Kids run around on the streets. Parents are going to have to watch out for them. It's just, it's too busy. It's too busy. And if you were to allow somebody to use those homes to turn into businesses, you are actually adding to the whole "Old Town, Arvada" name. You're keeping that tradition going. So I would like to just say that I'm opposed.
Thank you. Deborah Andrews indicates she did not wish to speak, but is in opposition to the director's And is it Haley Scatergard?
Haley.
Haley, sorry. And then Alan Best.
Hi, my name's Haley Scattergood. I live at 5802 West 60th Avenue as well. I'm speaking on against the dilemma in Old Town. I'm sure that, we've all heard that everyone says it's historic, like that's the biggest word everyone says. The key points that I like to point out is how symbolic Old Town actually is to Arvada. It's very small, it's a very small town, and it's very homey, and it has such a historic charm. The growth of Old Town was very meaningful to me growing up. It was my go-to place. It was very, I mean, safe, and there's a lot to do there, and nobody can really express it other than people who live there. To this day, all my friends and I still come and enjoy the fun-friendly atmosphere, and I'm very fearful that the traffic and, I understand the light rail usage, but that brings people in from Denver. So there's more commute rather than sitting down and enjoying your time. The idea of a small town becoming industrialized is very painstaking to think of. It's such a lovely family place. The impact of the home and business closest to the site will lose the comfortable historic feeling that makes them old, makes Old Town, Old Town, homey and sweet. The idea of the placement of this site is not truly ideal, because it takes away from the historic value we all know and love. I'm a fifth-generation resident of Arvada, and I'd like to keep the Old Town name and to keep the historic charm with future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Best, and then Roger Dranka.
I own, excuse me, I own a house in the historic district that's 130 years old. You have a difficult decision, obviously, honoring the past while recognizing the exigencies of the future. State Senator Zenziger spoke very well about the virtues of historic preservation, of what they can bring to a community. Others have mentioned the value of the infrastructure that is across the street from this site, part of a $4.7 billion project that we approved in 2004. Of course, we want to have some density close to train stations, to mass transit. I want to introduce yet another idea to the conversation. The attorney for the opponents mentioned the idea that there is inevitable give and take. Redevelopment of Old Town, of course, is inevitable. It has to be updated. Part of the calculation here needs to include energy. I've only heard energy mentioned once tonight, and that was solar access. I think it would be useful, maybe not in this particular project, but going forward, to have goals as part of this of perhaps the phrase "net zero." It's part of the conversation we need to have globally and locally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dranka? And then Anita Marcusson?
Good evening. Roger Dranka, 7401 Grandview. Lori and I started this ball-rolling, because we were asking for fair process. We don't believe there's been a fair process. There's argument, good and bad, both sides, that we could do for hours and hours and hours, which should happen. So far, the weights have dropped in the favor of the developers, getting waivers, this, that, and the other thing, for claims they have put out that have not been sufficiently proven. So fair process, we need a fair process. Whatever the outcome is, it will work itself out. Please consider that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anita Marcusson? And then Scott Staley.
I'm Anita Marcusson. Came to Arvada in 1948. Lori, I didn't buy this from you all, because I'm with the Arvada Historical Society. So I want to tell you that I'm in the McAvoy House a lot, and what I hear every day, I'm in the McAvoy House, are visitors who say, "We love Old Town. We come here because it has Old Town." I also do the school tours in the spring for the kids. So I want to tell you just a quick story, and then I want to tell you a story how maybe this will affect the next generation. I'm telling them about the big project as we go out on Grandview, about how Grandview was named and how it was, because you could see all the way down to Clear Creek, and it was this incredible thing. And look way yonder, you can see the skyline of Denver, and they're in awe. And I say, "This was named Grandview. However, we're going to have buildings in front of this, so you won't see the skyline. You won't see the Clear Creek. You won't see." And the little second graders, this is the mind of a second grader. Well, maybe they should change the name to "No View" from "Grandview." So I can see my next project, as this project, if it does come about. As we walk down Grandview, we talk about the streets. We go past Eli. We go past all the little places, and they'll say, "Where did this building come from? This wasn't built in 1909. This isn't the 1896 two-story, first two-story building of Mr. Barthes on the corner of Grandview. This is the mind of a second grader. This is the mind of our future city council people, too. Please take that in consideration, what kind of tradition you're leaving for the historic value of Arvada." Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, and then?
Good evening, sir. Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor. Scott Staley, Arvada Historical Society. There's two words, charming and quaint, and if anyone's ever had the pleasure of guiding anyone on tours, especially to people who are from out of our area, those are the two words that they often use. So it would be a great shame if we continue to chip away at old buildings and property like this, because when we keep chipping away, the charming and quaint will no longer be applicable. People won't be able to use those words anymore.
Thank you. Next, I believe it's Carter Holmuk? Is in opposition, did not wish to speak. I, sorry, I messed up the name. Sorry, I messed up the name, I'm sure. Then Carly Drink Hallmark. Good evening.
My name is Carly Drink Hallmark. Y'all kind of know me. I've lived and worked in Old Town, Arvada, for the past fifteen years, and I love it here. I have watched Old Town go from the sleepy little town to the place where everyone wants to be. It is a vibrant and thriving community that I'm happy to be a part of, so much that me and my husband have chosen to raise our family here. I know a big argument before has been that people against this development are afraid of change. That simply isn't the case. We are afraid of our town being destroyed and history being lost, like so many of the other districts in the surrounding areas. Who's to say, once this building goes on, goes in, there won't be many others to follow until the area is completely unrecognizable? There have been a handful of new developments that I think have made a great contribution to the area, and I've, and have helped with the vibrancy. I'm sure this building could be a great addition to Arvada, but anywhere besides where they want to put it. It simply does not fit. It will completely change the look and feel of why people come from all over to visit historic Old Town. It won't have any history, there won't be a story behind it. I'm the office manager of the Eli Ashby Healing Arts Center in Carly's Boutique, located directly next door to the proposed development. And I can tell you firsthand, the community is saying what they are saying about this development, and it's not very good. People think there is corruption in our city government, and that the main focus of this development is greed and money. Me and my family don't agree with that, and have faith that the city will do what is right and fair, and what will be best for Old Town. Everyone is happy to see, see something being done with these lots that have clearly been let go over the years, and even more so by the new property owner in his attempt to show how badly these houses need to go. Honestly, a little TLC can go a long way. The Foster House wasn't always a looker, but with a little love and commitment of the owners, it's one of the most prized buildings in Old Town. I hope you all consider the history and the charm that will be lost by allowing this building to come in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry Canepin, and then Jennifer Heenox.
My name is Jerry Canepin, 8670 Jellison Street, Arvada, Colorado. You know, in the previous years, Arvada was the, in the leadership position of surrounding suburban cities with such things as a city mark, which I designed, municipal building, which I was one of the designers, one of the founders of the Arvada Center. All of these things came together and made the surrounding communities envious of us being leaders, not followers. And along with the City of Arvada, Dennis Coligan, Ralph Ashton, myself, started the adaptive reuse of eleven buildings in Old Town to set the standards of the historical environment for diverse businesses and services. Also being one of the design team members of Disney World and Universal Studios Florida, I learned what it means to create safe, green, and clean environments with memorable experiences, which is present in Arvada right now. Old Town's always been the heart and special place to shop, even through the growth of outline, outlining shopping center, its architect centers. Its architectural character set the tone for specialty boutique shops and services, and let's take the leadership role again in preserving what we have and not submit to the desires of developers imposing computer-generated look-alike trendy cosmopolitan urban buildings into historic districts. Other cities have done it, and they're paying the price, 44th and Lowell, in that area. This may be the last parcel left to be preserved, and is recommended by the Urban Land Institute, Institute that remaining existing residences and through contextual architectural design for new buildings serves as a good transition to retail and commercial properties, and could be the east end anchor for Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer did not initially wish to speak, but did want this read into the record, this project, oh, do you wish to speak now?
I'm Jennifer Enox, I live at 6789 Estes Street. I've lived here in Arvada since I was nine years old. When we moved up on the hill, the house was moved from Wheat Ridge up to the hill. The reason that we moved up, when we moved up there, there was nothing on the hill. You could look down and see the trains go by around Oberon. So I know what it's, what's happened to Arvada since then. I do not believe that this building has anything to do with the essence of Old Town. It's, it's not what should be there. What is there is what should be there, and it should be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Ashton-Yonky, please. Does not wish to speak, or maybe does, in opposition to the decision. Renee Nelson. And then Deborah Redford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to speak this evening in regard to the district itself. What I've put on the display here is something that you have within your packet. It outlines the area itself, it also highlights where these buildings are. And what I'd like to point out here is in regard to this, the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission, when they brought comparables forward, that they erroneously compared these particular buildings to properties that are outside of that historic district. The other piece that I'd like to go over would be the certificate of compliance and the partial waivers. I have broken down the block for that particular area that we're speaking of from the first, first exhibit. As you can see, we've got two stories, one stories, one and a half stories. There are no three stories within that block. What you can also see is that red line, that red line designates where these properties stop. And what I'm stating is, in regard to the waivers under 4.1, minimize impacts when feasible. Number 5.9, maintain traditional size in regard to the size of building relation to the traditional buildings along Grand View themselves. If you look at what's there now, and this is what's going to be there, that, to me, does not fit any of this criteria. I don't know how we got to this point. How many people are you going to be disenfranchising if you lose that national historic district? This comes down this evening to two things. Are you wanting to stay historical, or are you wanting to go critical mass? I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Deborah Redford did not wish to speak, but may now, in his opposition to the director's decision. And my last sign-up sheet is Stephen Byers.
I'm Stephen Byers, I live at 8924 West 66th Place. I was part of the original citizens group that put together to come up with guidelines for Old Town. At the time, we said it was important to preserve the historical nature of Old Town for now and future generations. The character of Old Town with its residential and commercial mix, as well as the unique view from Grand View, made Old Town a jewel for our city and the Denver metro area. The houses in question, I love history, the houses in question give historical context to Old Town in that they show what housing stock looked like, as well as the transition between residential and commercial during the time of Arvada's founding. If this building goes forward, I hope you can picture it, a massive building that will dwarf the buildings to the east and the west, and leave the remaining house, the Foster House, in a canyon without any historical context. To the north will be a three-story wall facing 57th Avenue. Design guidelines call for preserving residential buildings for two stories, and for maintaining traditional scale in the established area. This does not, those are huge waivers. Having lived in two other TOD areas in my life, I've said in the past that the pressure to go high will be enormous in the future of Old Town, and although, also that the buildings will be in danger. I was told this would never happen in Arvada, we would put it in the code. I see codes changing and exemption after exemption being made. I see the view along Grand View has been sacrificed for density, and now buildings are going. When developers can see profit from redevelopment of a property and purchase property and tear it down with ninety days' notice, Old Town is at risk. Whatever you do here, I hope you'll deal with this ninety-day teardown, or you're going to have a pseudo-Old Town, you're not going to have the buildings. I've seen it happen. Whatever you do, deal with that question. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the sign-up sheets I have. Is there any other individual that would like to address city council before I move back to the city for additional information? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name's Carl Campanella. I live at 10181 West 59th Place. I apologize for not signing up, I've just heard a lot of different comments. I agree with the fact that the property should be preserved. If we lose our history, we don't have an opportunity to put hands on what the past has been, the future turns cold. We have no direction, we have no idea of why we get to where we get, and we have no idea how to preserve even that as time passes. It's vitally important that you preserve these buildings. It's vitally important that the nature of Old Town stay what it is. For years, communities surrounding Arvada used Arvada's Old Town as a guide, as a blueprint, for what they did to some of their older areas. In the last ten or fifteen years, you're seeing that disappearing. You see it disappearing for larger buildings, just to assist with or to justify. What I see is a justification for transit-oriented development. These properties need to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no one else indicating that they wish to speak. Do we want to take a brief recess now and then reconvene? We'll reconvene if people will take their seats. And we're going to hear from the city, and frankly, Madam City Attorney, I feel somewhat compelled that because the appellant sort of has the burden of proof here from my perspective, that they ought to get one more bite at the apple as well.
That's fine with me, Your Honor.
Okay. If you want it, Mr. Foster.
I guess I talk. Being paid by the work.
Go ahead.
Mr. Stachelsky was going to start us off, and I don't believe...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he should be back here in a bit.
Here he is. No problem.
I just wanted to have a couple of small comments, minor comments, and acknowledgement. So, number one, I very much appreciate the public for coming out tonight and their comments. They're well-received, and it shows the passion that people have for this community. And so, I just really want to acknowledge that part of the dialogue. The, the, Old Town is a historic district, and it's important that we keep its integrity, and that is part of what makes Arvada so special. When the design guides were created, in this last iteration, they were created, I believe they were approved in 2014, or they went into effect in 2014. What, it's really important is that they went through that filter and that lens of, if things met the guidelines of the design review guidelines, that they would be within the context that we were trying to achieve. And that was the focus and the goal of having those guidelines, which aren't applicable in other areas of the city. And that was one of the things that was intended in order to have that continuity of context. With respect to specific comments related to it being a fair process and a public process, the, the only thing I really want to say there is, when those guidelines went into effect, the type of zoning that the city council with the community that supported those guidelines was a straight zone district. And those straight zone district said that if you met the development criteria of the zone district, that you could be approved administratively. So there was no intent to not have a public hearing or a public process, but it said, if you were going to meet the development criteria, and I'm saying development criteria separate from design criteria, if you met those development criteria, then you could meet, and then you could be approved administratively. If you could not meet those development criteria, then you would have a variance process. And that variance process in this case was, they couldn't meet the two-to-three-story development process, and so that's why they had a public process to decide that development. From there, it was... From there, it was really the staff's administration of the design guidelines and then going through that process with the DRC to make sure that staff's thinking and understanding of the design criteria was consistent with what that body's feelings also were. And so, those were kind of put into conjunction, which ultimately led to seeing the compliance with the design guidelines. I appreciate the comments tonight, but a lot of the comments that I heard were related to demolition and historic structures and those types of things. I heard less of specific criteria that were not being followed and why there was some error or flaw in a criteria that wasn't able to be met. I think that that process went through a really good vetting process and whatnot. And so, I hear mostly that the guidelines have worked for us and that these are compliant with the guidelines and therefore setting up a stage for if the guidelines have been met, then the project could move forward even after those buildings were demoed. The City Attorney is going to talk a little bit about the demolition process and the 90 days and why we have that and where it is in the code and what we're obligated to follow and what we are obligated to consider when looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you may have noted earlier, when we were going through the exhibits provided by Ms. Drink as council, I made a comment about Exhibit 3 and Exhibit 8. Those are subsections of the demolition review criteria and standards. The reason that I took issue with those is that they, it isn't the entire section. There is a paragraph that precedes those two sections, which I think is critical for council's understanding of the parameters of its decision. So, I just want to read that paragraph really quick. It is a short paragraph, thankfully, so we won't be here too long. "It is vital that all of the historic structure in downtown be preserved wherever feasible, such that the integrity of Old Town Arvada will be sustained. Demolition of historic buildings is therefore strongly discouraged. However, where applicants do request demolition of a historic structure, the city may delay a demolition request for 90 days and apply the following criteria and standards. This criteria shall be used by the review authority in its deliberations." So, the authority that's provided to council, when you go through and review the subsections that are outlined in Ms. Drink as Exhibit 3 and Exhibit 8, lead to a potential for City Council to delay the demolition by 90 days. And that's the context that I wanted to give council. If council wishes in the future to change that guideline, it certainly has the ability to do so. Obviously, we would want to vet that process and make sure that we were engaging and creating a process that was fair to both a developer and the residents of Old Town and in the interest of city residents. But that legislative process is separate from the determination that you're making here today. Today, your determination is governed by the currently existing criteria and the preceding paragraph that I just read to you.
Thank you. Anything else from the city? Okay, Mr. Foster?
I do City Council meetings a lot and I do appreciate the process that you have afforded everybody tonight. And I know it's not easy to run these meetings. Couple of points. First is one of the criteria that I didn't spend much time talking about under the design review process demolition criteria is A2. And you have that in Exhibit 3. And it is relevant information presented at a public hearing held concerning the proposed work. That's a review criteria for a demolition permit in the design guidelines. The 90 days that the City Attorney speaks of is important because your traditional demolition permit doesn't provide for 90-day waiting period. And so, 90 days is granted in the design guidelines because this is a land use activity. It's a land use activity. Demolition is a land use activity. It's defined in the code. And land use activities in the historic district require a certificate of compliance, period. And the 90 days allows for A2, which is a public hearing, to review the proposed work and then for the planning director to either issue or not issue a certificate of compliance. That way in which I describe it makes a lot of sense because that's the way it should be interpreted. And it's not simply, "All we have is the ability to delay it for 90 days." For what? To put pressure and guilt on a developer not to demolish a property? That's ridiculous. You have a process that's in the code. You have criteria that is applicable to demolition and it's a land use activity. That's why you have the 90 days. Trust me, I represent developers. Guilt doesn't impact developers. And when you overpay for property that you know you can't rehabilitate, you're not going to spend 90 days trying to figure out how to preserve the building. It's not going to happen. Not going to happen. And so, the 90 days is to do exactly what we're frankly doing tonight is having the public hearing. And I do view this as a public hearing on hopefully the review criteria as it relates to the demolition as well. Who did we not hear from tonight? Because we heard from a lot of your constituents. We didn't hear from the developer. Why? I don't think it is, in fact, the planning director's job to get up here and defend his decision. He made a decision with the information that he had. I think it's wrong, but I don't think it's his obligation to stand up here and defend his decision. Frankly, it was an application that was submitted to your staff, that your staff reviewed, that your staff approved, but it was based on a plan from a developer who we didn't even hear from tonight. Isn't that curious? You're from 35 or 40 other people, but this project wasn't worth coming up and defending as a developer himself. And I think that's unfortunate. The Planning Commission meeting was just a few weeks ago. It was on election night, as a matter of fact. And a couple of planning commissioners said to a number of the same people who are here tonight, and I hear this frequently when I'm trying to develop a site, change is hard. We're growing. We need density. We need places for people to live because they want to live in Arvada. And so, change is hard. And that was something that two of the planning commissioners said to my client and to those gathered. And I agree. Change is hard. In a historic district, it should be very hard because it's the job of a historic district and the design guidelines that you created to preserve those structures and the integrity that your predecessors believed in back in 1997. And again, you're the stewards now of that historic district and I hope you will not approve the certificate of compliance tonight. Thanks for giving me the additional time.
Thank you, sir.
With this caveat, I don't think it's our burden. And I don't know if you were just kind of joking around a little bit, but I don't think it's our burden to prove, right? I think it's the applicants and the application to prove that it's worthy of a certificate of compliance.
Regardless, I wanted to give you another...
I saved that comment to the end, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion. We'll open it up for City Council questions and then hopefully some action at some point. So, who would like to start? Mr. Marriott, you barely beat him.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question. I believe this would be to whoever the relevant staff member might be. So, the question I would have is we heard tonight, I believe mostly from the public, public testimony that this project going forward would demolish three contributing structures, which would be 30% of the contributing structures in Old Town. Seems to me that that's probably not correct, that maybe be more refined to say 30% of the residential structures in Old Town. Would that be more accurate?
Yeah, I believe they were referring to the single-family form. My count, we actually have eight of those within the district, eight that are contributing, one additional one that's not contributing. The, I think they may be getting at 11 because they're counting the couple of outbuildings on West 57th that have been converted to residential uses, but we still don't recognize those as a residential form. So, I would say we have nine total single-family forms in the district and we are losing three of them. If this gets approved.
And how do we count some of the single-family forms that are now commercial use? Like, I'm thinking of the old house where Global Goods is, that obviously was at one time a single-family residence, but clearly is not now.
Yeah, so we go by form, so we don't look at what, how it's operating, what use is inside of it. We're just looking at the form.
At the form. Okay, okay, got it. When we talk about either historical or contributing structures in Old Town of regardless of form, approximately how many of each are there?
Yeah. During the 1998 application, 62 total buildings were included in the application, 42 of which, well, I should say resources because the plaza was one of them, they refer to them as resources, were included. 42 were considered contributing. We lost one of those. The, I'm drawing a blank on the name here, the Reno Park Lumber and Coal Company that sits where Smoking Fins does now. However, it is worth noting that between the 1998 survey and the 2013 survey, six buildings underwent renovations that the 2013 survey said should then make them contributing. So, and one of those is questionable because one is the roadies-to-cooers conversion that happened after the 2013 update. So, could that have taken that one out of contributing status? We'd have to have a professional determine that. But that still leaves five additional buildings between the 98 approval and the 2013 survey that are now recommended to be contributing structures due to facade improvements and changes to the roof and things like that.
Right, okay. And are there potentially some other structures in Old Town that, given the right level of renovation, might become contributing that aren't currently?
Yes, there are. There's a number of them that are identified as having a facade treatment that's not appropriate, additions that are not appropriate, window, changes to the window, things like that. So, there is potential. I think what this shows is that our process is working and that we're seeing buildings become contributing that weren't contributing. Just wanted to note that.
Right, okay. I think that's all the questions I have for the moment. I may have some more in a minute. I'll move or allow Mr. Pfeiffer to ask his questions. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I do, I think I'll start with some too and I won't go through them all. I mean, I'm interested what my peers will have to say. The first thing was the public awareness process. Maybe you can help me understand how we communicate to the public of these situations. You know, in a typical public hearing, we have the developer notify within, I guess it's 500 feet now or soon to be. How do we notify all the businesses and the property owners within that area? Because of the claim of no public awareness, I kind of want to know how that worked.
So, there's a couple of different processes and I'm going to let Jeremiah talk about some of them specifically, but just to kind of go through the different processes and then we'll break out those notifications. So, I believe that there was a neighborhood meeting that was not required as part of this process that the developer did and we can talk about the notification there. Then there was the notification for the BOA and then there was the notification for the DRC. And those, and then we can get into the appeals process of the notification when it went to Planning Commission and City Council. But I'll start with the notifications of those three processes prior to kind of the appeals going to Planning Commission.
Yeah, so we, starting with the variance process. So, we did host a neighborhood meeting prior to proceeding forward with the variance request and noticing went above and beyond what we normally require. So, we had them notice for the Reno Park and Old Town as well as the Saki Walter neighborhood. We had that neighborhood meeting and then we went through the variance process in which we also made them notify the same neighbors as we did for the neighborhood meeting process, excuse me, for that public hearing on that variance request, which was approved. As it relates to the DRC Design Review Committee hearing, that does not require mailing or posting notices like a typical public hearing does because it's not a public hearing. We did post it legally in downstairs where we post all other meetings and notices, et cetera, but that was not required to have a mailing or posting notice for that case.
And I'll add that the typical requirement is just to post it within 24 hours. I believe that the hearing, or the hearing, that the DRC was on August 15th. It was posted on August 1st. And so, it would have been on our website and in the place in the lobby on the same date, August 1st.
Okay, let's clarify. So, I get posting it here and so forth, but that's assuming I'm coming every day looking for a problem. But is there, is there, you went and put, you gave every neighbor a postcard or something during this process?
For the variance process, it was mailed.
Okay.
Mailed notices. Had there not been the variance request, the noticing would not have been required for this project.
I don't think that's a question I should, hold on. I think for now, I'm going to hold off on any other questions if you don't mind, Mayor. I just wanted to start there.
Mr. Jones?
So, I'm going to kind of go back to the beginning. Who's, Mr. Stachowski, you'd mentioned the review committee and you said that the folks that sat on that were technical experts. What is that? I mean, you kind of elaborated on it, but who are these people? I mean, are they, are they residents of Arvada? Are they merchants in Old Town? Who are they?
Sure, I'm going to let Rob Smatana, who's our staff liaison to that committee, kind of review and talk about their specific credentials.
Yes, they are all Arvada residents. We do have business owners in Old Town on the committee. We have a couple of people who work for architectural firms on the committee. I'm just trying to go through all of them that we have. There are seven, typically seven members of that board. We've been short one member. You recently saw a change to the makeup of the committee to have a bid member as opposed to a HODA member. So, they're all either in Old Town, having some relationship with Old Town, or are professionals in architecture or urban design.
Okay. That's, and those are appointed by council. So, the, as I was listening to the, excuse me, the comments, it sounds like the two properties along Grand View were used for, or maybe at least one of them was used for some period of time as a rental property. And is the current owner, it sounds like the current owner of the land was the renter, or I'm sorry, was the owner of the property and was renting it to your mother?
The developer.
The developer was...
And Ms. Drink, if I could have you come to the podium when you're, just so that we can maintain the record and all that good stuff.
Yes, of course. So, the property was originally rented to us by, five years ago, for my mother and my mother-in-law. And then, the developer stepped in and purchased the property from those owners and did rent it to us for four and a half years.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to connect all the dots here. So, I believe it's in here. The comment, find the right exhibit. The comment, find the right exhibit. Exhibit eight, under the design review process, B1, the what assurance, what is the assurance that the new project will be completed if demolition occurs? And counsel for Ms. Ranka indicated that it was with every intention to proceed. What, how do, how do we view that from a staff perspective? I mean, is that a pretty common language, or is that, how do we, how do we decipher what every intention means?
Sure, I, you know, it's, I think it's a difficult thing to necessarily, I mean, it's a subjective statement, right? It's not, you know, you, but, so where you get into belief, if you will, is relationship and commitment to the project. So, going through the process of where we are today is, through all the design iterations, the back and forth, the hiring of architects, and all those other things. Getting this far is a risk from a business standpoint, which, you know, I don't know technically how much money that they spend, but these types of projects, it's not unheard of to go into hundreds of thousands of dollars before you break ground. And so, from a commitment standpoint, and going forward and going through the process of getting entitlement, it would seem logical to, if you're going to spend that level of money on getting an entitlement, and then following through to a point where you have the right to build what you were entitled to build through that process, and you've spent tens of thousands, if not hundred thousand dollars on that, that, that shows some level of commitment beyond just the words. So, we can't stand here and say tomorrow, if this happens to be approved, that nothing could happen that would prevent them from going forward. However, if you spend that kind of money and invest in this kind of time on the project, logic would stand to think that you would follow through. I think that's the best I could say.
And, you know, and it makes sense, but I'm just curious, is that, are those, is that common phraseology in other applications, or is it just specific to this because it has this design review process?
It's really specific to Old Town. So, it's not, it's not a question that we would ask other developers in getting a PDP or an FDP, like, are you, they're going through the process, and then they need to go through the next process to actually build the thing, but in this case, it's, it's a part of.
This, because of the design review process?
Correct.
Exhibit nine in this book here, where did the quote from twenty fourteen come from? Is that from the developer, because he owned the land at the time? So, I don't know who's going to answer that question, but.
It's Mr. Foster's exhibit, so let's have him justify.
That was, that was from the developer's documents that they submitted to the staff for their process. So, I don't know if they owned, you know, which properties they owned at that particular time, but they had done at least some level of due diligence on the rehabilitation that was required.
Okay.
That was from the developer.
Okay, so, now, this will go back to you, Mr. Stachowski. In the, in the Certificate of Compliance, one of the partial waivers was because of the hardship. So, is that how you established the hardship waiver to, based on this, or based on?
No, I, those quotes are new to me.
Okay.
And not, not part of those considerations. The, the, the specific answer to it is it's what the DRC really looked at, at their review, and they're the ones that applied the specific criteria of economic hardship. I agreed with that in my decision to issue a certificate of compliance, but it wasn't any specific numbers that have been provided in this exhibit.
And so, what, could you just walk us through some of those, what, what all the criteria are for the, for the hardship, and how the committee came up with their determination that there was some hardship?
Sure, well, there are four criteria. So, if you're going to give a waiver, then there are four that you can choose from. And let me just pull up my, or pull up the area. I believe that those have been shared in some of the council correspondence, but it goes through these different areas of which ones may or may not be applicable. So, let me just read them to you. All right, so, excuse me, so, within our code, it says the, there are four waivers. So, the proposed land use activity is of the nature that will not substantially alter or erode the authenticity or any historically significant exterior feature of an existing structure, or is compatible with both the distinctive characteristics of the Arvada Downtown Historic District or Old Town zoning districts, Reno Park, and is with the intent of the proposed applicable design guideline. So, that really refers to existing buildings. The proposed land use activity is of a nature that, that will not undermine, impair, or conflict with the intent of the applicable zoning district as set forth in Article Four of this code, and is compatible with both the distinctive characteristics of the Arvada Old Town Historic District, Old Town zoning districts, Reno Park design guidelines, and as applicable as intended and proposed in the design guideline. So, it means that, is it consistent with the Land Development Code in general?
And is that, just before you go on, you had referenced the straight zone district earlier, is that, is that what that's in reference to?
In part, I will be perfectly honest, this is a little bit of a nebulous criteria that isn't really applied that much, because I think it has, it's fairly hard to interpret. I wasn't specifically talking about this criteria in terms of the straight zone district. That's really referred to as a category of zone district in which the design guidelines are applicable to the development criteria within those zone districts, and making sure that you're adhering to those, excuse me. The third one is strict compliance with the design guidelines would create an economic hardship, such as the cost to strictly comply, would result in an inability to obtain any reasonable economic return on the property. And then four is the land use activity is of comparable architectural historic value and the authenticity to that required by the applicable design guidelines. So, meaning that the design guidelines that is being, or excuse me, the design elements that are being presented are comparable of architectural and historic value to what is also in Old Town.
Okay, so, could, could the developer, technically, the developer could demolish or destroy these two houses and build two similar houses that could be conforming based on whatever the criteria is to be conforming, and still not have any economic hardship? And so, so that's one option, but the option that this particular developer chose was to build a higher-density building, and because of that, we think that there's an economic hardship.
So, the criteria also, and I'm actually going to let Jeremiah and Jake speak to this, is that the, the style of zoning that we have in Old Town is really form-based code, and so we talk about building form, and with inside this zone district, which is the OTGV Old Town Grand View, it allows for different types of building forms, and one of the forms that's allowed, so it was contemplated and is considered, and consistent with this zoning is the mixed-use form. And so, that's the form that they're using to choose to, to move forward with this project. And so, it's consistent with one of the forms that's allowed in this district. The, the, the point that you make, and, and they're right, I, you know, I don't want to be an advocate for the project in the sense of, of economics, of making sure that they get a return, where our, our point of view is, is we want to make sure that the process is followed with integrity, and so it's important for us to say, what are the paths that you can go down? What forms can you follow and those types of things? To get to your point of, could they tear down the buildings and then rebuild these buildings? That wasn't the proposal that was in front of us. And I couldn't necessarily argue whether or not that would be an economic hardship or not, based on the cost that was going into it, what the rate of return on, on those types of things are, and, and those types of things. So, that's more of a speculative thing about what that, that would be an economic hardship. We looked at economic hardship relative to specific types of criteria, not necessarily the overall rate of return for the development as a whole.
So, there, and, and there was a reference, and I believe it was by counsel, to the design guidelines of page forty-three. I don't know, I don't know that I saw what page forty-three was, and so I just feel like I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage.
So, I don't know what the page numbers, she has my book, but I think what he was talking about at the time was relative to demolition criteria. Actually, that's not going to line up. I don't know what is, I'm not sure what he meant by page forty-three.
Mr. Foster, can you solve that mystery?
I can, yes, it's the, it is the design guidelines for Old Town Arvada, page forty-three.
Okay.
On the bottom, it says demolition. And it says, "Any act or process that destroys in part or whole a structure or architectural site, demolition of a contributing structure is inappropriate."
Okay.
So, if I could just get some clarifying, if I just get some clarification around that from staff's perspective on what that statement means?
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that falls under Chapter Two within the design guidelines, and it's used as, this chapter is kind of used as, as a guide to anybody wanting to, to build or rehab a project, et cetera, in Old Town. And so, it defines specific treatments that are appropriate to historically contributing buildings, and then treatments that the guidelines consider as inappropriate, one of those being demolition that they refer to.
So, and, and the only thing that I will do is I'll marry in the code the other demolition criteria where it says, which Rachel pointed out, that is in front of our Appendix A, that notes that, let me find it so I can read it appropriately, where we acknowledge the fact that demolition of historic buildings is therefore strongly discouraged. So, we have said in multiple places in the code that it's inappropriate and it's discouraged. However, it is still allowed by code, and it, it's not staff discretion of whether or not we're going to allow it or not, it's whether it meets these criteria, and then what provisions in the code allow us to not issue or issue a demolition permit.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll hold there, Your Honor, if I could.
You bet. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, I have a couple more questions for either Mr. Stachowski or the planning staff. So, this proposed project, does it meet all the setback requirements and lot coverage requirement for this zone district?
Yes, it does. There's a variety of different setbacks at play here from property lines and then from neighboring structures, but it does comply with those.
So, there's no waivers for any of that? And, and also, in this zone district, are buildings even allowed to be set back from the sidewalk, or are they required to be at the sidewalk line?
There's, there's, there's some minimums and maximums. In this zone district, they are required to be brought up to the sidewalk edge, and there's actually a, a minimum amount that the building must be built to at that frontage line in order to kind of create that, and, and we're talking about for a mixed-use form building. But that is to kind of enhance the more kind of urban environment, walkable environment that we're in. There's minimum building widths that they have to adhere to, and for mixed-use buildings, no lot coverage maximums, because it's generally assumed that they're going to take up most of the lot in a mixed-use form.
Right, okay. So, it seems like to me that one of the issues here is the impact that this would have on the neighboring property to the west, and that, but, but yet the zone district doesn't really allow anything different, other than kind of what the developers attempting to do here with setting back, you know, some of the portions of the building to try to open that up, but yet still have the front of the building up against the, the back of the sidewalk, is that correct?
Yes, yes, there, that is correct.
I think that's it for my question on that subject, thank you.
And I just wanted to, and I apologize, I wanted to add one more thing as it relates to the step-back portion of the taller levels. Per the zoning, and I mean, you see it in some of the other historic buildings in Old Town, and some of the newer ones in Old Town as well, that, that second story, such as Grandview Plaza, for example, is built to the maximum height that's allowed without that step-back portion.
Right.
Kind of creating, you know, some of those more impacts on the street, whereas with this development, they did push back those levels, obviously.
Right, so that brings up, that brings up the question, this, this building could have been proposed to be same place it is, but instead of having anything set back, any upper-story setback, could be just the same height and, and vertical from the back of the sidewalk, straight up with no, with no setbacks? That could have been one of the things that was proposed.
That's correct. I think we would have used or tried to use some of the guidelines during the design review process to try to get them to step it back and not, not give a waiver on those. But per the zoning, yes, they, they could do that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
So, thank you for provoking another question. So, with regard to, again, going back to the, the waivers, five point one-two, the maximize solar access, is that, said another way, is that bulk plane? Or does bulk plane come into play in this? Because, so, I'll just leave it there, does bulk plane come into play?
Bulk plane does not come into play in the historic district in Old Town. There are requirements for setbacks from historic buildings, and then there is the solar access requirements. A lot of it talks about if a building is on the north side of an existing building, to step it down. This is south-facing, we still received a solar study that showed what the impact would be on the longest day and the shortest day at different times, and we, the stepping back of the building is what minimizes the solar impact. Right. Or mitigates it.
So, and again, why doesn't bulk plane come into play? Is it because it's too, you have a single, well, it's not a single-family home anymore, but it's a, it's a business next to now a larger building?
Well, I, I think it would, it would detract from the character of Old Town. The bulk plane also impacts the first person, and then the second person in is not subject to it. You could get, kind of get an uneven pattern of heights, so it's, it's not a requirement in the, in the Old Town district.
And, per the, the Land Development Code, that does not, the bulk plane that you're speaking of does not apply in the Old Town Zone District.
Okay, thank you.
I've got at least one question. In terms of the Board of Adjustment decision, is that on appeal right now?
It is, it's on a CRCP one oh six A four.
One oh six action.
In state district court right now.
Okay. Mr. Pfeifer?
For me, it's more procedural. I mean, you can help me understand this, ninety, and, and there's a lot of paperwork to study here, so, help me with this whole ninety-day wait period for demolition. Should that have been to us first as a public hearing, before we talk about this? I, I'm trying to just think of timing, because I have to agree with what was said earlier about, fine, let's just say this Certificate of Compliance gets approved or doesn't, or say it does, and then we get into the demolition wait period of ninety days. What do we achieve by waiting ninety days? We would come back to us. There's a public hearing somewhere, right? No? Help me with. Help me with this, I'm, I'm not, I'm not wrapping my head around the process.
Well, Lori, could you help with the answer to the questions? Because we've, we've talked about this and, um, guideline A two, in reference to, um, basically says that there needs to be a public hearing if applicable. And, so Lori's going to take it from there.
Right, we, um, we went over this pretty extensively at planning about, oh my goodness, there was never a public hearing and therefore there was no process. And what I explained to planning at the time is that not only is there not a requirement for a public hearing prior to, uh, receiving the recommendation from DRC and from the, um, issuance of the certificate, there's no ability in the LDC for us to actually have a hearing up to that point. So, we couldn't just create the ability out of whole cloth and create extraordinary procedure for the developer to have to go through that we had no ability to do.
So, what does the ninety-day gain us?
I think what, i- if I could speak to that, um, I think what you were asking is, are we putting the cart before the horse-
Yeah.
-in deciding whether the design review criteria are met if we haven't even disposed with the issue of demolition yet. So, um, the most that city council can do under the design review criteria and standard right now in that appendix A related to demolition is delay the demolition by ninety days. So, we can't stop the demolition under the current reading of the code. Um, that's why we're bringing it both at the same time. You can make the decision both at the same time, and whether you decide that you give them, i- if we delay it thirty days or sixty days or ninety days, eventually it's going to happen and you're going to have to have a determination on the design review guidelines.
So, what it does is delay the demolition?
Inevitable. That's correct.
Okay. That's it for now, Mayor.
I don't see any other questions. I think we need a motion. Mr. Jones, more questions? Good.
Just want to go all night. So, I'm just, again, asking for clarity on that. The ninety days is to allow, if, if, if it, to move the house. So, if, if somebody came in and said, "Hey, don't demolish it, I want to move it. I've got a piece of property that I own, that I want to move those two structures to this property over here at my cost or expense." That's maybe one of the challenges is that nobody's offered up any property to move these. It sounds like the developer may have made that offer? I don't know. I saw Ryan shake his head, "No."
The developer didn't make that offer.
Okay, but, but nobody's come forward with property.
That is correct.
And that's not the city's job to find the property. We certainly don't have city land to put those on. So, that's, I think, connecting the dots. So, the ninety days is to allow for some other action to take place before the demolition happens. I had another question and it just completely escaped me. Okay. If you give me another minute or Mr. Marriott asks another question, I'll come up with it.
Mr. Pfeiffer's going to ask-
I'll ask another question, so it's for Ms. Drinka, if she wants to come up to the microphone. I recall the, at one point, you put a bid onto the property, if I recall our conversations correctly, and you lost that bid.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Did you place a bid for this property at one point?
There was one formal offer made on the property next to my property, uh, where my mother-in-law lived. Uh, we were led to believe that we could possibly purchase that by Mr. Palmer. The former owners told us that at the closing, they were advised against purchasing it by their attorney. And, um, so, and Mr. Palmer had said there was another offer, so they needed to purchase it. So, he had, um, indicated that he might receive, he might accept a, an offer. So, we did make an offer, yes, because we had invested, um, tens of thousands of dollars. In the end, it was about sixty-five thousand dollars that we paid for my mother-in-law, who was disabled and didn't want to leave the property.
Was this the house right next door to yours?
Yes, the little blue and white house at seventy-three seventeen. And my husband renovated it.
Okay, so, the pictures we see in there were prior to your, your mother-in-law being there, or was that during?
Those exterior pictures of the worst parts, like the drain and that type of thing?
There was some interior wood rot and stuff?
Um, that was, I don't know when they took those pictures, but I do know, um, having been in construction for twenty-seven years with my husband, who's a master craftsman, that you can find a, a lot of problems on my house. It's seventy-four oh one Grandview, the Dr. Foster house. Um, and they were specific to areas that were, um, you know, deteriorated. And it's deteriorated even more if, uh, you know, it's just been left like that.
And what was your intention if you acquired it? So, is that for your mother-in-law, or?
Oh, that was, no, we actually wanted to do a gifts and collectibles.
Okay.
Um, a, more of a store or maybe a toy store, who knows?
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Drinka. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Jones?
I remembered my question. And this goes to the historical designation and some of the comments tonight around if these, you know, properties are demoed, we put that historical classification in jeopardy. Is there any truth to that statement?
Yeah, uh, so, as the applicant mentioned, there are, uh, four criteria for removal from the historic district. Three of them are kind of procedural, uh, there's additional information that reveals it doesn't meet it, things like that. The really, the one that applies that you'd have to worry about for removal of resources would be number one, and that says, "The property has ceased to meet the criteria for listing in the National Register because the quali, because the qualities which caused it to be original, originally listed have been lost or destroyed, or such qualities were lost subsequent to nomination and prior to listing." As I mentioned earlier, there are, there were forty-two out of the sixty-two buildings in the district were considered contributing. We've lost one, we could potentially lose three more. We've potentially gained six more in the interim. I don't think we're in any danger of, of losing our historic status anytime in the near future. If you look at it, I've spent hours on the internet trying to find, uh, districts that have lost their status. And almost always, it's individual buildings that have been demoed, have, uh, have, uh, been destroyed through, you know, fire or something like that. Uh, I think I read two percent of all eighty-eight thousand, this was a two thousand thirteen article, two percent out of eighty-eight thousand, uh, buildings over districts on the registry have been removed from it from nineteen seventy to two thousand thirteen. So, it's, it's not a common occurrence and I don't think we're anywhere close to, uh, hitting that point.
Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Um, yes, I actually just want to follow up. The six that have become, have since become conforming and contributing, are they, uh, commercial or residential? Um, because as, it's my understanding that it's the mix of both that makes our historical bid from the nineties, so, that was just, I wanted some clarification.
Yes, uh, you know, the areas of significance for the Old Town District are commerce, architecture, social history, and transportation. Those were the four. I know in one of the letters we received from, uh, the state, uh, Historic District, it talked about the, the mix of them. Uh, we are significant in other ways outside of that, so, uh, I, I don't think that's, uh, a huge concern, but they are all commercial in nature. Uh, I could give you the list, I have it written down. But there, there, none of them are the residential structures. Uh, only one of our residential structures in Old Town, uh, of the single-family form is not, uh, contributing, and that's the one, uh, just east of the McAvoy House. And it's, uh, and that's because it was moved mainly, I believe, is what the, the survey seems to indicate.
I don't see any other questions. Mr. Marriott?
With there being no other questions, I'll make a motion so we can discuss a motion. So, I'm going to move that Grandview Station Certificate of Compliance with the Old Town Design Guidelines located at seventy-three fifteen and seventy-three seventeen Grandview Avenue and seventy-three eighteen West Fifty-seventh Avenue be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact of the Community and Economic Development Director's issuance of the Certificate of Compliance, including waiver approval criteria on page thirty of the staff report. And so, I'd like to comment, make a comment on this motion. This is one of the more difficult things that I've faced on city council. These are very difficult decisions. Um, the, the, when I look at the possibilities here, the possibility of that staying just the way it is, um, seems to be maybe the worst of all possibilities. And, just like a hundred and fifty years ago, or a hundred and twenty years ago, uh, as Old Town was growing up and changing, and houses were moved from Old Town to other places and some were built and some were torn down. Over the course of time, that's happened with a number of places in Old Town. And I think about the lumberyard, which of course burned down, um, as, as one of those. But there've been many, many instances of that. And what's made Old Town has been the, the mixture. The mixture of uses, the mixture of ages, the mixture of building styles. And I think the, the, uh, this particular project continues what's been happening naturally for a hundred and twenty years there in Old Town. I really struggle with what happens to Mrs. Drinka's property because it clearly gets impacted. It very much so ends up surrounded by buildings on both sides. But, I think also in this case, the developers have taken actions to try to mitigate those problems as much as they possibly can with setting the, the top portions of the building back. So, while very difficult, uh, I'm in favor of this motion. Um, and I think the, uh, I, I think the, the waivers of the design guidelines are warranted, and, and so, I will be voting yes.
Others wish to speak to the motion? Mr. Jones?
Trying to get to my spot here. So, yeah, this is, uh, this, in my, in my four years, this is, uh, probably the second hardest, uh, conversation, um, that, uh, we've had here on council with regards to development in Old Town. And as I've, you know, as I've gone through this and listened, um, to the testimony on both sides and trying to understand from the perspective of Mr. An, Ms. Drinka, sorry. Um, and, and also, uh, from the perspective of the developer and what they're attempting to do, um, it, it's, it is hard and changes hard. I had to say it. So, uh, the, the big challenge, you know, for me, as I was listening, um, and my, you know, my, my thoughts went back and forth on both sides, was the impact to, um, to Mr. Drinka's property. You know, but then talking about the bulk plane and recognizing that, because that was my original thought was, well, the bulk plane has to play an issue in this, but, you know, in this, in this historic district, it doesn't have consideration. And so, I had to remove that from my thought process. And as I look at the setback of the building, um, you know, I, it, the thing that I, I do like about the building is it does activate the street. It activates the sidewalk in front of it and those shops that, um, could be there, and I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that those are all retail shops. And, uh, you know, and then as I, and then somebody had talked about, you know, computer-generated pictures, um, but as I looked at it, you know, the aerial photo, uh, of those, it, it felt like the same kind of buildings that were in that same block of buildings. You know, the bank's back there and, uh, you know, there's, uh, there's buildings of like-kind and quality, um, in, in the same area. And so, you know, again, as I go back and forth, uh, trying to make the determination on this particular property, um, or what the director has done with issuing the certificate of compliance, um, I'm having a hard time, uh, not, uh, accepting what the director has done, um, based on the reasons that he's provided and based on the, uh, the staff comments. So, I, I'll be voting for, uh, the motion that's been put on the table and appreciate all those who have participated in the conversation.
I don't see any other lights, so, okay, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, I have to agree with, uh, my peers at, to some of the comments. One, I have to say it is probably the second hardest one. I'll have to say you're right behind the Walmart. And, and this is a hard, hard discussion. And, uh, moving on to my ninth year, and, uh, only a few hearings have caused this emotional for me where you can, I can understand the both sides. I'm like, "Oh, yeah, you're right, oh, no, you're right, oh, wait." And you're just back and forth. And I think that's the pure, the purity of what council does up here is we don't come in with any preconceived thoughts or any opinions, and then we, we, we get together up here and we all get to hear the information at the same time and the, and the testimonies and, and this is a, a very complex situation. In fact, it's, I re, I think where I'm sitting up here, I'm thinking about the discussion we had about the design review, I don't know, back in fourteen or whatever. And I remember the conversations about the setback of the second floor and third floor, but that was mostly on, on Old Wadsworth, I believe. It wasn't here. And I remember, um, talking about activating the street and the having the buildings up close to the sidewalk. And I remember, I think I even remember the discussion around demolition because there was some concern about, you know, somebody unilaterally making a decision. And I'm a little fearful of our conversation that's happened tonight that, you know, you know, my, my thoughts here around the demolition is it probably should come to us from a historic district. We should be thoughtful enough to know about those and, and have due process around it. But, you know, we, we've set ourselves up over the last, whatever, going on six years, and this is the rules we're working under today, and maybe we'll change them in the future. As far as the property as it is and the property where it is, I'll give you my opinions on, as it is today, my fear for those buildings, even though I'd like to see something preserved, my fear is nobody's going to preserve them. I don't know who would step up, because they haven't, all these years, to preserve them. I mean, I know you're looking at me like that, but I, I haven't, I, I don't see it. I, I don't see somebody stepping up and saying, "Hey, I will preserve this and I will restore them," like the McAvoy or where the chamber is, or any of the other buildings that are historic. So, my fear is they would continue to deteriorate and the price just goes up and then they just become in disrepair. As far as the new proposal here, I like parts of it, but I also struggle with it as well. I don't think, I don't think that criteria five point one-nine. I think in the following one is not fully vet, in my opinion. I think when you talk about scale and you talk about, you know, how it fits within the, uh, Old Town, I, I struggle with this building, uh, the way it looks and maybe some of the size. I mean, it's a little bit, um, different than the rest of the block. The, and I think the windows probably throw it off. But, I can argue with myself about that as well because Old Town's well-known to be eclectic. I mean, we have so many variety of buildings in Old Town. I don't know if one opinion versus another from an, uh, architectural perspective even matters in Old Town because you have everything from the tropical of, uh, what is it, breadwinners? I forgot their whole spill of what they are, all the way to, uh, you know, the Industrial Revolution or the nineteen fifties kind of diner look over at the leather shop on, 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 um, Old Wadsworth. So, it, it's hard for me to say, "Well, it doesn't fit" when rest of Old Town is eclectic. So, honestly, right now, I, I don't know where I sit. I think the question is, is do we support or not support the director's opinion? I think that's what we're voting on, right? And are we also talking anything about the demolition? Is that, you're saying we're talking about that too tonight, the time? I'm looking.
I think that would probably require an amendment to the motion to, if we wanted to delay the, um, demolition?
That'd be an-
Yeah, under the Certificate of Compliance that was issued by the director, it does address the, um, demolition criteria, and it did provide for a thirty-day delay of any sort of demolition to allow for historic preservation of the buildings. So, you have the ability to approve that, to, to say, "Yes, we're, we're in agreement with that." You could change the number of days. That is a, a choice that you have under those, um, demolition criteria.
So, that brings up a good point. I think the question, so tonight, listening to testimony, I, I hear things about preserving the building, which is the big discussion. But I also hear people against the proposal of the development, just the development in general. But I hear very little discussion on the criteria of the appeal, which I think is really the intent of tonight. Right? So, so this is why, when I listen to the testimony, I listen to the discussion, I listen to all that, I- listen to all that, I, I, I didn't hear enough, strong enough case against the criteria, other than my opinion of five point one nine, I just don't agree with it. That's only one out of, out of seven, three type criterias. So right now, I'm not sure where I'm going to sit, but I just put spaghetti out there.
You want to hear some more discussion?
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I agree, um, I've only been on the dais a month, and this is by far and away the hardest vote I've had to take.
Welcome to city council.
Oh, okay, you might have won. Um, but I, I can see both sides, truly, I can. Um, I believe, as was noted by, um, Ms. Kritzer and others, the developer has worked very, very hard to incorporate as much community feedback and to make this project as strong as possible, that we need an east end anchor, street activation, things of that nature. However, what also strikes me is that numerous business owners have spoken up against this as well in that community, which is my community, this is my district, and we have numerous citizens here as well speaking out against this project. Old Town, whether you've lived here for sixty years or sixty days, is the heart of our city. It belongs to all of us. And as Senator Zenzinger noted, perhaps there is another way, a better way, where we can find the compromise as opposed to something that divides our community and the heart of our community. Um, somebody else noted, something once done cannot be undone, so perhaps there is a better way. I choose to believe that there could be, and so for that reason, I will vote no on this project.
I'm, I'm struggling big time on this one from a number of perspectives. I agree with Mr. Marriott that to have the existing buildings remain the way they are is by far the worst outcome. I went by there again today before coming over here, of course, been by those buildings countless times over the years. Um, and I struggle on it from a number of different perspectives. Certainly the fact that those buildings have become, you know, hangouts for homeless has been a, a real negative factor. Um, and we certainly don't want it to remain that way. To what extent, you know, and I think it was useful to get, to have the information from, um, twenty fourteen to show that these buildings were not in great shape then. Um, I think there was a question both before planning commission and I think for us tonight of how much of this has been brought on by the developer not maintaining the properties properly, um, although we don't have any specific evidence of that, but certainly the fact that they weren't in great shape back then, um, gives some solace to me that it, that, that the developer hasn't just allowed them to become worse. Certainly, we required as a city the fencing to go up and the boarding up of the buildings because they were indeed becoming habitats for, for homeless individuals, which was really negative. Um, I truly believe that activating the rest of Grandview is highly desirable, uh, but I'm struggling whether or not this is the right project to do that. And, and whether, you know, I think that, uh, I do have significant concerns about the impact on Mr. Anka's property, just as I have concerns about the existing condition of the properties have upon breadwinners and the, the appearance of Old Town with their current conditions. Um, so there's, we're just all over the place in terms of, of, um, what's in the best interest of the community here. I think that, and, and the irony is, is that, um, several years ago, and I don't remember how far back, but the executive director of Urban Renewal said, should this become an urban renewal project area? And I said, absolutely not. We don't want to touch this with a ten-foot pole in terms of, of, um, getting involved because I anticipated this kind of controversy and this kind of passion for, for this and that, you know, so, uh, it's not an urban renewal project. It's not, um, a situation where, you know, the city's going to be subsidizing this in any, any way. Um, I am sort of looking at, do we need a timeout? And at the very least, I would support a ninety-day, um, no demolition, uh, so that we could be looking at this somewhat further. But, um, I'm, the, the, I mean, even a one-story building brought out to the full street, really does create a canyon for the Drinkas' property. And I think part of the historical significance, the charm, is if something could be done to renovate those existing buildings. So it's sort of, I kind of like that it shows sort of a difference in style of, of the different kinds of housing that was, was in there. So, I mean, that's, and yet, on the other hand, do I really believe that there's somebody who's going to come in and take care of that? So it's, it's all over the place, but at the very least, I would like to see someone propose an amendment to the ninety days, um, as, as either a friendly amendment or a, uh, a voted upon amendment to Mr. Marriott's proposed motion. So I've rambled for a bit, and I'll let Ms. Miller now speak to the extent that she can.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, um, I just have to recall back to when I first became the chamber president in two thousand and eight and what this street looked like. And I would park on Grandview Avenue all day long and, uh, maybe four or five cars a- all day. And I remember as the vibrancy started to happen and you couldn't find a parking spot, it was my favorite day as a chamber president, when I couldn't find a parking spot on Grandview, and that meant the businesses were successful and people were shopping, and it was fantastic. I struggle with, with how this squishes Eli Ashby House, and then I think of the, um, when I go into a big city like a New York or Philadelphia or something where you have these tall skyscrapers, and I always say to Ranger when we're traveling, when this little house is in the middle of all of them, and I love that that person didn't sell, that person didn't give up. So I go back and forth. I love the vibrancy and I, but I'm, I'm, I'm bummed about, you know, how big it is on, on either side of Eli Ashby. However, this is the be careful what you wish for. So it sounds like the developer has taken community input, backed up that second story and the third story. Should we say no to this and we get somebody else in there and he sells because he's just like, I'm done? And he sells to somebody that doesn't care what the neighborhood thinks? That's what makes me nervous. It sounds like this developer has listened to people and, and made some adjustments. He's even willing to relocate the buildings. That, to me, is quite generous. We've seen a lot of developers come through here. So I'm just saying, be careful what you wish for if something happens to this project and something else comes in that is bigger. That's all I got.
Mr. Jones?
I was just wondering if you could say more about your proposed amendment? What, how do you, what do you see the extension doing?
Uh, frankly, to some extent, it's going to, you know, frankly, I think whichever way we decide, that there's a good chance of an appeal by the losing side to the district court. And to some extent, um, having that ninety-day in there is going to probably give a little bit more flexibility in terms of, of, um, applying for a stay to, um, you know, to, uh, keep the buildings from being torn down. And so I'm, I'm trying to kind of protect that-
Right.
-that potential right. Um, and I'm really, I'm really struggling with that we did not get a presentation on the project. I, I'm, I'm really, I understand our team's approach. Um, I think that, you know, none of us want to second-guess our director, and, and I don't think we're second-guessing the director. I think we're trying to deal with the fundamental, some fundamental policy questions-
Right.
... that go beyond the integrity of, of what anybody on our team did. I don't think any of us up here are questioning that whatsoever. But we, this is a difficult one and, and I'm, I'm struggling with the mass, the size of this particular project and, and whether or not that's really the only thing that can activate that street all the way down to the end. So, um, perhaps a view that if there's a ninety-day stay, that it might make people want to talk some more. Now, whether, you know, whether or not it will or not-
Right.
-but that's all I can, that's all I can think of to kind of, not necessarily kick the can down the road, but, uh, hopefully cause some further discussion. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, hearing your conversation, I, I think I'm still struggling with the size and everything else, so I'll be voting no. I think, you know, listening to the conversation, I, I, we get one shot at this, and I get that it's there and, but we, I don't think this, this thought was intended, and, and maybe it didn't work out the way we wanted it to work, but the process, maybe some of the design of it, the magnitude of it, it is the tallest building on that block. Um, I think Jean Building is two stories, if I remember correctly, like tall two stories. Um, so I'll be voting no. I think, I think we, I think we need a timeout and, and maybe, maybe, maybe the, um, develop- I will say to the Drinkas, I'm not sure that you'll preserve those buildings in the long run. Somebody will come back through someday, somehow, do something. So the perfect world for you would be is somebody comes and preserves those buildings. Um, but they're in such disrepair, I suspect what could happen is somebody else come back and propose something different. I, you're optimistic, but we sat here, we sat here a long time and we see what comes in and out of here, and, um, even if we set, we turn this down today, uh, some, something that will come back. I suspect it will. So, um, and that will be my, my hope, is that something that looks more like Old Town and is right-sized to be like Old Town. And yes, I agree, this area needs to be activated. This is absolutely something needed. That's why I think it will eventually, something will go here. I just don't know if this, like the mayor said, that this is the project we want to see there. It looks too modern for me, for Grand, for Grandview, and, um, I don't think that, I think the criteria five point one nine has a huge, and the one below it, which is, I think, five point two, two, I think, is really important to me. I think when I, you know, got re-elected, one of my commitments to, to the citizens was to, to preserve our land zones and pervert, preserve what our, our character and our community is, and I'm going to stay focused on that. And I just, if my guts telling me that, I gotta go with my gut right now on this one. So.
Mr. Jones, did you have anything else, or?
I'm still debating this friendly amendment and what it will and what it could do.
Whether or not it would do any good or not.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer.
I mean, I'm doing the math in my head, and it feels like we're at an impasse anyway. You haven't necessarily said how you're going to vote, but I'm assuming how you're going to vote. So, uh, I don't know, I, I just don't know if a friendly amendment gets us where we need to get.
Should we call the question?
Or whether or not Mr. Jones would even, or Mr. Marriott would-
Would even accept it.
-consider the friendly amendment, would not?
You never know.
Can we have a presentation?
Well, so, so with that comment, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to Mr. Mo- or to Mr. Marriott's, uh, motion to, you want to help me with the words? Uh, impose a, a ninety-day stay, uh-
Demolition-
Demolition stay.
Ninety days, is that the?
If you can help me with the right language around that.
Yeah, that's correct. It would be a ninety-day stay of the issuance of a demolition permit.
You know, I, I would be happy to accept that as a friendly amendment. I don't see any, any particular reason that there's any urgency here, um, and so, sure, be happy to.
Okay, so.
Any further discussion? Mr. Pfeiffer and Mr. Marriott have cast their votes.
And let's just be clear what we're voting on.
This, this allows the project to move forward, but that there is a ninety-day stay on-
For demolition.
-demolition.
So-
And you're a-
Because, because Mr. I just, because I saw the way Ms. Simpson voted, I wanted to make sure that she was clear.
I was not. Thank you.
So you're not voting on, because the amendment was accepted, we're not necessarily voting on that.
Right.
So we, I made a friendly amendment, so the, it's still on, the motion's still on the table with the amendment for the ninety-day stay. So.
Thank you, David.
Okay, all votes cast. This requires four votes to pass, and it fails on a three to three with Williams, Pfeiffer, and Simpson voting no, Marriott, Miller, and Jones voting yes. I'll reiterate that I don't view this as any commentary upon, um, our team's process or, or, um, the decisions that they made. I think I see this much more as a policy decision of city council. Why don't we take a very brief recess? We've still got some other public hearings to attend to. to attend to. Okay, we're ready to reconvene. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on the Come and Go Store 2315 at the Palmetto Club Preliminary Development Plan located at 7995 Sheridan Boulevard. Mr. Devon?
Planning Director Rob Spintana present this item.
A preliminary development plan approval for the redevelopment of an existing site into a convenience store with fuel sale, fuel cells. The convenience store would be approximately 5,600 square foot in size, and contain six fuel pumping stations on, in three islands. The site is located at Sher, on the southwest corner of Sheridan and Eightieth, and the Planning Commission did vote five to zero to recommend approval of the prelim, of the preliminary development plan, with two members absent that night. There are four modifications requested as part of this project: a reduction in landscaping, in the reduction in landscape buffer, an increased maximum fence height, reduced landscape setbacks along a portion of Sheridan, and reduced minimum open space. Because this is a redevelopment site, staff does support the modifications for the reasons listed in the staff report. The signed posting log and mailing affidavit have been submitted and are in order. And with that, John Moore, planner, is here to answer any questions, and the applicant is here for a presentation.
Posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anyone wishes testifying in this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Do we have anybody here to testify on this matter? Do you swear for the testimony you're giving? This matter will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you very much. The applicants can go ahead and make their presentation. Sorry to put you through a long evening.
No problem. Unless anybody objects, we'll give you the, a very quick, high-level overview of this, instead of going through it all, and just jump in if you have any questions, and then we'll get to the site plan, because that's probably what you care most about. So Come and Go is a family-owned and operated convenience store that's been in business for 60 years. We have 400 locations in 11 states, with almost 70 in the state of Colorado, and five more under construction today. Our, as mentioned, our current marketplace format is a 5,600-square-foot location that really focuses on clean, open aisles, more open spacing, different than the typical convenience store, trying to brighten things up, friendlier environment, with a more significant focus on fresh food. It's our fresh food program. We have the more typical convenience store, grab-and-go, come-in, grab a cheeseburger, hot dog, that kind of thing. We also have fresh-made, fresh, onsite, customizable sandwiches that you can order on your own. You can take pizza to go home, so breakfast, lunch, dinner, fresh options, healthier options, and definitely an expanded food program. Our business is focused on corporate social responsibility, so we give 10% of our profits back to the communities that we serve, with a focus on sustainability. We have the most LEED-certified stores for any convenience store retailer in the nation. We offer alternative fuels, such as E85 and biodiesel, and are testing EV charging in about a dozen locations. Two years ago, we launched a food rescue program in Colorado Springs, so this is where we take our unsold food and donate it to homeless shelters or food pantries, that sort of thing. So, last year alone, we donated 3 million items, at about $10 million retail, diverting 1.5 million pounds of food from the landfill, and providing 1.3 million meals to those in need. So, that's just the quick version of who our company is. We are very excited to get our first store in Arvada, as well as redevelop this corner. So now I'm going to hand it over to Eric Jesse, who's our engineer, and he will go through the site plan.
Okay, one quick question from Ms. Miller.
I just have a quick question. Thank you for being here. I love your company. I just want to make sure, it's near my house, I just want to make sure you'd be serving those breakfast pizzas that you have out at your conifer location.
Yes, we will definitely be selling our breakfast pizza.
Almost sound like buying a vote, but I'm not quite sure. No, but I do echo that, because at my office, that's all they want.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Now let's get down to the real substance here.
All right, thank you, guys. My name's Eric Jesse. I'm with Wolfert. We're the design engineers on the site. So you can see here, we just got a couple of quick pictures of the renderings. This is off of Eightieth Street here, and this is the northwest corner of the site. This, there's two accesses to the site, and we aren't changing either one, so the, the road, the road will stay the same, the accesses will stay the same, so there won't be any real changes as far as circulation on that intersection is concerned. As you can see here, it's a bit, the road's a bit elevated, so you're looking down onto the site a little bit, and we've actually, that entrance isn't quite as steep as it is now, if anybody's used to that old site, so this'll help cars get in and out of there a little bit easier. You're looking here from the intersection at Eightieth and Sheridan there, and that monument sign's going to change just a little bit, but it's still going to be the exact same thing you see there. And there is significant landscaping on this site, a large number of shrubs and trees, and we'll get some, some more of those trees later. You can see here, this is from, this is on Sheridan, and this is looking from, this is on the southeast corner of the site. That's a bus stop that's out there, that's existing now, and it will stay that way as well. So what you're seeing here basically won't change very much. You can kind of see the store tucked behind there, but it's pretty much out of sight from this viewpoint. And then this is, there's a shared access drive between, with the Palmetto Apartments over there, and this is coming up that drive from the south side of the site. Sheridan is off to your right in this picture, and that's with the back of the store, and you can see the trash enclosure off to the left there. And this here, and this is the important part, that we really want to emphasize, this is looking from the Palmetto Club Apartments, so this is from the southwest corner of our site. You can kind of see the store there, off to the right above that pickup truck there, and we are actually adding a couple more trees than what are shown here even. We got permission from the owner of the apartments to add a couple more trees in addition to the, there's four large, mature trees there already. We're going to add four more, just to make sure that the residents have a nice buffer there. And again, we'll have our eight-foot-high privacy fence, and there's actually four or five feet, I think, of grade change between the two sites as well, so we feel that that's going to really hide the gas station, and hide the noise, and along with the significant landscaping and trees, should really keep things nice and quiet, and let the residents be left alone there.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? So, from this rendering, it looks like there's trees on the apartment property. Are you putting trees on their property, or are you putting trees on your property, just on the other side of the fence, so they'll be kind of on both sides of the fence?
Both, actually. So there'll be, there will be a couple tree, new trees on this side of the fence, on that property side, on the residential side, and then there are some, some of the big trees you see there are actually on both sides of the fence as well. And, and yeah, some of those trees that are out there are 30, 35, 40 feet tall. They're, they're large trees, they're old, mature trees, and then we'll be adding new ones that will have a significant canopy as well.
So you've already had discussions with them, and come up with a plan of how you're going to do that, and who's going to take care of them, and water them, and all that stuff?
Of course, yeah, and that's actually the owner's letter of support, and their indication that they appreciate our efforts to put landscaping on their property, as well as part of your council packet as well, so you can see further detail what their thoughts are on that, yeah. And then I think, that's it. That's not our store, that's another Come and Go store, but, that's out, that's somewhere a little bit different. But, yeah, are there any questions for us? Like I said, side axis is staying the same. Yeah, really not much is changing, except for the fact that we are increasing the landscaping from what's out there right now, so there'll be a little bit less pavement than there is currently. And also, we are adding, right now, there's a small walk that goes along Sheridan, we're going to put an eight-foot path in along Sheridan, so that'll increase access for bike, because Come and Go does have bike racks, and they do have tables outside and inside and stuff like that, where bikes could actually stop and have food. So, we think that trail especially is a nice amenity that helps, helps the whole area out there, and it connects into the, the eight-foot path that goes along Eightieth as well, so we think that'll help a lot.
And you're demolishing the existing building, right?
Correct, yes.
And it has no historical significance, right?
You know, yeah, unless you guys are really into Woody's, I don't think so. Yeah, what, the, the new building, the new building is on the north end of that site, and we're going to tear that down, and it, our building will be much closer to the south end of the site, to provide better setback and visibility.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just have a question. So your EV program, you kind of hint it, I'm interested in it. So would this location be having any charging at all?
Not at this time. This site, our typical site is about an acre and a half, and this site is just under an acre, so there's not enough room today.
So this site won't have an EV?
It's not planned for. If, if we could ever get to a point, the problem would be parking. We, we have to take parking away to put EV charging in, and we, we can't give up the parking here, so today it's not planned.
What about along that fence with the pretty trees?
Maybe we could have our engineer look at it. At this time, it doesn't qualify for size. If something would change, we, we definitely would take a look at it.
Okay. If there's not any questions, I'll make a motion.
You may make a motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move that the Come and Go Store 2315 at the Palmetto Club Preliminary Development Plan located at 7995 Sheridan Boulevard be approved, subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ford, now you can cast your vote.
May I just make a statement, Mayor? I want to, I want to make one statement?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to tell the applicant that I read your, your synopsis of who you were, your strategic focus and so forth, and I, and I really appreciated it. Also, one of the things, I appreciated the sustainability aspect, and I, and I also appreciate the fact that you, you make yourselves a part of a community in support, and, and that's very important to me, and I think it should be true of all businesses, and I thank you for doing that. And so that, that's not the reason why I'm going to vote yes on this, but I wanted to tell you that that really does make a difference.
Sure, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Sorry. Try again. Well, I, you were locked out, now you're not locked out. I don't know why it's, here, let me clear the votes, and everybody vote again. Nope, up there, you got it. Very good. No surprise, that passes seven-zero. Congratulations. We look forward to your development of that, and apparently the breakfast pizzas are phenomenal.
It's great, you'll have to try it, yeah. Thank you.
Very good. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1904-9, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 74-31, land use fees of Article II, Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this, before you tonight, this, this ordinance would repeal the land use fees and put in the correct land use fees as part of our community development services fees in order to recover costs. The specific action is associated with code compliance administration. You would adjust, you would approve land use fees adjustments at the October 21st meeting, and, when you adopted the budget. Subsequent to that meeting, we discovered that the fees associated with code compliance administration had been inadvertently removed from the fee table, so what we're doing here is getting these fees back in place as part of the, you know, fiscal 2020 budget, and the recommended action is consistent with our commitments that we made, that the, to the City Council, that development fees would factor cost recovery, and the need to remain competitive within the surrounding jurisdictions. So we are recommending approval of the ordinance as proposed.
Any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no comments. I move that CB 19-049, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 74-31, land use fees of Article II, Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading, numbered 4720, and published by title only.
Motion's for approval. That passes seven to zero. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1905-0, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2019. I bet Mr. Archer's going to do this presentation. Morning, or, good morning. Good evening.
Well, if you'd like, I can go past midnight, and then we can say good morning.
I don't think so, sir.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity. This is part of our routine budget process each year. To quickly to review that, in October of the prior year, City Council approves the budget for the next fiscal year. That is done by ordinance. In April, we usually bring to City Council a carryover ordinance. That includes items that were not completed in the prior year, and any new items that had happened between October and April. That is also done by ordinance. You will see a green box, which represents resolutions. Sometimes we have changes that happen that need council's authority, but we don't necessarily bring them to you as an ordinance. So they don't officially change the final budget, but it does allow City Council to act on those items. Usually, those are things like grant, reimbursements, or areas where we get additional revenue. That can happen at any time throughout the year, and finally, we come to you at the end of the year to clean up any of those items that might have happened. So I'm excited to tell you this year that that is a very small number of items. While the overall budget is quite large, you will see that the majority of the budget City Council has already seen and acted upon. The original budget of 235 million, you approved in October of 2018. The carryover ordinance of 108 million, you approved in April of 2019. While that is very large, that includes 80 million for the bond issue that was approved by the voters. Another 14 million of that was carryover capital projects that were not completed in 2018. You will see that there were three other ordinances presented to City Council. These were all items that required IGAs with CDOT, related to improvements to our various signals, and then one study on some roads, and finally, one resolution that was presented to City Council for wastewater, related to a project that came upon us outside of the budget process. What is left is about 4.8 million of items that we are bringing to you tonight. Each of these items have a revenue source, either grants, revenues over our original budget, or significant or sufficient reserves to cover the expenditures. We'll run through these very quickly, as City Council has this in their packet. A little over $600,000 in the general fund, 200 of it for the purchase of new vehicles related to the police department, 150,000 for a reimbursement from RTD related to officers on the train, 80,000 for Foothills Animal Shelter to help cover increased costs, 70,000 for the funding of Porchlight, which is a proposed family justice center, and then 152,000 for various operating expenditures. Again, this is one-half of 1% of the overall budget, the smallest in my tenure here at the city, and I'm quite thankful to the other department heads for their studious use of the budget. We heard earlier tonight, many hours ago, some conversation from the housing group. This 1.4 million helped This 1.4 million helps offset the increases that they were able to get. This is actually an exciting number, because this is federal funds that we then were able to turn and support through the HUD program. And the police tax increment funds, 414,000 to help complete the Delta Station, this is specifically for the water tap and the purchase of the land, 45,000 for supplies and equipment that were offset by various grants that they were able to obtain throughout the year. Again, this is money that came in that we are asking to spend. Councilmember Dyer was here, he would remind me that the reason our budgets are so large is that we double-count for everything. This is a double-counting here. The 414,000 was a transfer from the tax increment fund to the CIP fund, where it was spent out of the CIP fund. In the wastewater fund, this 1.7 million was for the Ralston Trunk Sewer Line, City Council approved that by resolution earlier this year. 263,000 in the golf course fund, this is related to increased revenue, this is the supplies for the restaurant, so you're looking at inventory and also the temp wages. On the food service fund, we have a few items, 103,000 to replace the sound system, that was an item that they had saved up for over time, and they will complete that in the new year. 63,000 for retention incentives related to the movement from Arvada Events to the center, and finally, 50,000 for temp wages, again, this is for increased revenue to help increase number of events. In the insurance fund, we're still dealing with the hailstorm, so this is some additional roofs. We do have some increases in related to claims. Even though our claim activity has been normal, we have had some increased surgeries, and for any of you that have had surgery recently, you know that is quite expensive, we've had some backs, some shoulders, and some knees. And then some increased costs related to vehicles. And finally, in the vehicle fund, you will see a repeat of that police purchase, transfer from the general fund so we can buy the vehicles, and then a purchase of a bucket truck. This is related to the tree canopy that we have in the city. Our trees are quite old, we've just heard a little bit about that, and we now need to purchase a quite larger truck. My understanding is that this truck will enable us to get up to some of the largest trees we have safely.
Mr. Marriott's got a question on that.
Just a quick question on the bucket truck. We're purchasing a new bucket truck to be able to reach tops of some of the biggest trees. Are we keeping the old one, or are we recovering some of the value there?
I think we're going to surplus the old one, but I don't know that for sure. If we do surplus it, we will sell it at auction and recoup everything we can.
Whatever you can, okay.
It is still a viable truck, it is quite old, but it does work, it's been maintained.
Okay.
Ms. Ford.
Just two quick questions for clarification. The increase of 12,000 needed for the parking lot lease payments at the Old Griff's location, what is that again?
So we lease the parking lot to allow people in Old Town to park there for free, and so that's part of that payment. That lease comes up in 2020, and we will decide at that time if we're going to continue.
Okay. And then with the golf fund, the funding for the two requests, it says will be offset with increased restaurant revenues. Are they from 2019?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Ms. Simpson.
If there's no other comments, I'm prepared to make the motion.
You may make a motion.
All right. I move that CB 19-050, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2019, be approved on final reading numbered 4721 and ordered published by title only.
Motion's for approval, passes 7 to 0. And we'll open the last public hearing for tonight, Council Bill 1905-1, an ordinance approving a license agreement between the County of Jefferson and the City of Arvada for the installation and use of a potable water fill station. Mr. Devon.
So this would allow us to basically replace our existing potable water infrastructure or site at Indiana and move it to a preferred site, which is at Plainview Road and Highway 72. This property is owned by Jefferson County and is under control of the County Road and Bridge Division, and the county is willing to enter into the license agreement that's before you tonight, allowing the city to install and use the potable water fill station at this location. We serve a great many customers, some folks from outside the city, but also a lot of businesses that need potable water to conduct work, construction work, or other sorts of work along those lines. This would become a more efficient location for this particular use, and we are recommending approval of the ordinance before you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. Pfeiffer, I think you're first.
Does anyone have questions?
Did Ms. Ford or Mr. Jones have any questions?
I think, yeah.
Ms. Ford.
I just had a quick question. When citizens take the water, do they have to prove that they're residents of Arvada?
They complete information that demonstrates whether they're residents or not, and we track that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer.
But when they use the water, right, and they're not a resident, they pay a higher rate, right?
I believe we charge the same rate, whether it's a resident or not.
Okay, I'll make a motion. If there's any other questions?
You may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 19-051, an ordinance approving a license agreement between the County of Jefferson and the City of Arvada for the installation and use of a portable water fill station be approved on final reading number 4722 and ordered published by title only.
Motion's for approval, that passes 7 to 0 as well. Next, public comment, anybody like to speak for up to five minutes? Seeing none. Reports from the City Council. Mr. Jones.
So I just want to talk for a second about a young man who lost his life at Ralston Valley, Cameron Holland, who was a student athlete at Ralston Valley, lost his life on December 7th in a tragic car accident. And, you know, while we could think of all the many reasons how this could have not happened, or why him, or, you know, why was he by himself, the one kind of overarching theme was he didn't have a seatbelt on. And had he had a seatbelt on, we might be able to still see him today, but we just don't know. And so on this last Saturday was his memorial, and it was amazing, and the outpouring of the community for the Holland family has been overwhelming, and the family, just wonderful, wonderful people, but I just, if I could do anything or say anything to encourage people to wear their seatbelts, and to click it for CAM, so they've got these little wristbands that all the kids at RB and parents are wearing, to remember CAM, and to remember when they get in their cars, especially these high school kids, to always put their seatbelts on, because you never know, it might just save your life. So go home and hug your kids, tell your moms and dads you love them, because you just don't know.
Thank you for that. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Well, and I know my day job at CDOT, we're taking that very seriously, and that is, I mean, I think it's like 47% of fatalities, I think, don't have their seatbelt on, so it is a very shocking, I remember as a kid riding so close to the dashboard and didn't wear seatbelts, but it is important, and hopefully, the primary seatbelt law goes in effect, and I know the leadership at CDOT wants to pursue that this year, so we'll see how that goes. I just want to simply say, I wish you all Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and to the council, it's another great year. I'm blessed and privileged to live in this great community and have a great family, and I consider all of you part of my family, because we spend a lot of time together, especially tonight. We'll contribute that to Ryan. No, he's the cousin. That's the gift, Ryan, thank you. It kept giving tonight. No, but all seriousness, really, I know Lori was making a comment about what we were saying at the breakfast, I want to clarify that even further. I work at a very large state organization that I could only wish to have an ounce of what we have here in this city, and the level of commitment, proficiency, customer service, passion, I could keep going on, on values, and even servant leadership, which is very important to me, it's demonstrated every day, and, you know, I'm going on my last term, and I reflect, we are so lucky as a council to have all of you, the employees, and the citizens should be equally proud to have such a well-run, loyal machine that the city has, and I can't say enough, but I think it's a good way to end the year, and it's my thoughts, my opinions, I'm sure the council would agree, and the mayor might have some more thoughts, but at the end of the day, I'm very, I'm very thankful to be part of the team. Thanks for making us realize we're a team.
We certainly are, and I'll echo the, because I have clients and people I've known a long time that are CAM's parents, and what a horrible, horrible situation that is, and it always seems worse when it's in the holiday season, and so it's chilling and a good reminder in terms of the seatbelts, and more importantly, to hug our kids and just be thankful for every day we've got. As we enter into the Christmas/holiday season, I wish everyone the very, very best. We had a lengthy hearing tonight that was, as I think everyone could witness, was very tough for each of us in terms of our decisions, but I do want to reiterate, this is no reflection upon the team here at the city. This was a tough one, that's why we're elected, to make those tough decisions, and we did. So I wish you all well as we move forward, and look forward to working with each and every one of you into 2020, the roaring twenties that we're going to be entering. A little plug, I interviewed Lauren today on Channel 8, so be watching for that to come out.
Coming soon.
Coming soon, yes. So a great experience, and learned a few more things about Lauren today, so it's all very positive. So with that, Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of the entire Arvada team, we wish the council and your families very happy holidays, and thank you for working together with us.
Ms. Mars.
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you all, we stand adjourned. In keeping with tradition...